Mayor Silverman?
Yes.
It is 7:00 PM if you would like to get it started.
Sure, I just didn't see all of the council members, so, um, but I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is 7 o'clock. Welcome to the joint meeting for the Catati City Council on its accessory agency for the former city community, sorry, let's start that over again, to the former Catati Community Redevelopment Agency on Tuesday, June 9th, 2020. Um, we could please have a roll call.
Councilmember Delosso?
Here.
Councilmember Lammon?
Present.
Councilmember Harvey?
Present.
Mayor Silverman?
Here. And, uh, do we know, uh, does anybody know if, uh, Councilmember Harvey is not able to make the meeting tonight?
She should be joining us this evening. She might just be running behind.
Okay. I'm just a bit concerned about starting the meeting before everybody is here. Um, well, let's move on to the, um, pledge of allegiance and then we'll wait before we begin any approval of minutes. So if everybody online could please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So let's hold on for just another minute. I'll see if we can maybe try texting. Councilmember Harvey, uh, I just don't want to start the meeting and then have her join in and end up not being here, so let's hold off for just one more minute. Thanks. Has anybody tried checking in with Councilmember Harvey?
I also did check in and we will, uh, hopefully hear back.
Okay.
Hi Mayor, this is, um, so I did speak with her. She seems to be having some communication problems.
Oh, okay, because I know I had to, um, upgrade or update my Zoom software before it would let me log in, so maybe she's having a similar problem. Um, can I ask early advice from our city attorney if there are any issue with moving on to item four without Councilmember Harvey's presence?
Mayor?
Sorry, repeat that last bit.
Sorry about that. Uh, no, there's an issue. You can move forward. Uh, there is a form.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'll move on to item four, approval of minutes and notice of waiving and reading of all resolutions from council meeting from May 26th.
This is Councilmember Delosso. I'm moved to approve.
This is Councilmember Lammon. I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the approval of minutes. Um, please give a roll call vote.
Councilmember Delosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Silverman?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So that will show four, one abstention, or one absence, I guess, votes to approve. So now we'll move on to minutes. My terrible speaking voice today, so I apologize in advance. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at catatricity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Catati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt, comprehensive customer service and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based as well as appointments by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@catatricity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please call 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels, available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. So we'll move on to item six, which is approval of the final agenda. I will check in with City Manager Ovid and see if there are any changes to the agenda tonight.
No, thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to item seven, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So at this point, I will ask our city clerk to check in with attendees of the meeting and see if anybody wishes to comment during the public comment period.
Thank you, Mayor Silverman. And just as an added, to make public comment, please use the right-hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial star nine if you're just using your telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor or myself to address you by name or phone number. And for the audible Zoom notification that you've been unmuted once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin. Uh, Mr. Barrich, go ahead. Mr. Barrich, are you present?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, as I was saying, if you have a quorum for the meeting, you do not have to wait for Susan Harvey to join the meeting, okay? If Susan wants to join the meeting, or any of the council members want to join the meeting or leave the meeting, uh, they can do so as long as you have a quorum, okay? My main issue tonight is, as I noticed on Councilmember Lammon's Facebook page, that he supports Black Lives Matter. My question to the council is, I think you need to put this on an upcoming agenda, because if you're going to all, uh, support Black Lives Matter, or you have a discussion about it, the citizenry wants to know whether you plan to defund the police, or disband the police, or increase our police department's budget for proper training, more officers, and so forth. The citizens want to know. Now, the Democrats have been running Catati for over 50 years, so if you have a problem with the police department, as Black Lives Matter does, extreme displeasure and disapproval of police departments across the nation, then you need to agendize it and clarify for the public whether you're going to support the police or you're not going to support the police. My second issue is, I made a complaint through the police department that there was graffiti uh, and, um, uh, down at the La Plaza Park and the defacing of the Jim Boggio statue. I went down to, again, today and the, um, Black Lives Matter graffiti posters are on the electrical panel. And I went back to the police department and I complained. This type of graffiti needs to be moved. It's inflammatory. It has not been voted on by the, the city council to use our parks in this fashion. Uh, it is a violation of the sign ordinance, um, and, you know, you can't have this down there. You need to, and also, when it comes down to our other city artifacts and statues, you got Bob Coleman's memorial plaque down there too. And if there is civil unrest in Catati and people come down to Catati to riot or loot or destroy public and, uh, property or deface our public property, you need to move those statues to a place of safety until you figure out what the hell we're going to do about this, okay? We, none of us want to see the statues or memorials damaged, defaced, and so forth. I don't care if the memorials are legally been put in the parks or not, because we know the one about Bob Coleman was never, uh, agendized and never approved by the council. But regardless, it should be protected and moved to safety until we figure out what the city's going to do about all this. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Silverman, uh, Marjorie Crump here. Go ahead, please. Ms. Crump, are you, are you there?
Hello? I seem to hear a television in the background, but no person's speaking.
No, that's not me.
Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay, good. Um, I have lived in Catati for 10 years. I am African-American. Um, there are three other people who will follow me in talking, Sue Hirsch, Will Proudy, Adrian, uh, Luby. I want to read a quote. African-Americans have been living in a burning building for many years, choking on the smoke as the flames burn closer and closer. Racism in America is like dust in the air. It seems invisible, even if you're choking on it, until you let the sun in, then you see it's everywhere. That is a quote from Kareem Abdul-Jabbar. We are seeing it everywhere, and the four of us who are wanting to talk with you briefly tonight cannot let this rest. A poem. What if 2020 isn't canceled? What if 2020 is the year we've been waiting for? A year so uncomfortable, so painful, so scary, so raw, that it finally forces us to grow. A year that screams so loud, finally awakening us from our ignorant slumber. A year we finally accept the need for change. Declare change. Work for change. Become the change. A year we finally band together instead of pushing each other further apart. 2020 isn't canceled, but rather the most important year of them all. That poem is by Leslie Dwight. This is important. What is happening in our country is important. We will not go back to the way it was. Reverend Desmond Tutu said, "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." We refuse to choose the side of the oppressor and we invite you to join us. Following me will be Sue Hirsch, then Will Proudy, and then Adrian Luby. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Crumpshire. Mayor Silverman, are you okay with going, uh, in an order, as suggested?
Um, sure, I don't know if I had seen everybody's hands ups, but, but sure.
Sue, go ahead, please.
It looks like she's still muted for him.
Unfortunately, I think that might be on...
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good, good. As I speak, I'd like it kept in mind that police forces across the nation actually have their roots in a sort of slave bounty hunting task force that existed before we all decided by dint of the Civil War that slavery was bad. Today, it's simply swept under the rug and hidden in prisons, uh, and there are two and a half times more black people in those prisons than white people across the nation. Those black people are seven times as likely to face police abuse as are white people and five times more likely, uh, to be murdered by, by police. And considering that America gets a lot of free or very cheap labor from our prison population, I think we can all agree, at least for the sake of argument, that slavery is sadly far from dead. All taxpayers, in fact, have lately become prisoners of a system which pays police to beat and slaughter people for exercising, excuse me, their rights to peacefully protest. In light of current international events, my neighbors and I are only asking, uh, a small thing, which is for you to consider allowing us some form of oversight of police performance and their funding. We're also asking for a review of the qualified immunity policies and to have body cameras put on all police officers. Use support by officers in Rialto, California went down by 60% after police began to be required to wear those body cameras. That stat is from The Guardian and also Truth in Media. My friend and neighbor Will Proudy mentioned to me that over half the city budget, uh, funds the police. We think it would serve us better to put a bit more of that funding into other types of services, and that might help us to have less need of the police. Uh, some good places we could put that extra funding are housing for the homeless, education in drug addiction, and mental health services. Mentally stable people with places to live don't go around the neighborhood brandishing weapons and yelling invectives or doing their business in public places. We don't need more funding to pay for more weapons for the police. They need to be better trained in de-escalation tactics and non-injurious and non-lethal use of force. If the situation is dangerous, the police officer shouldn't be dispatched to that situation alone or should call for backup. In this way, they can arrest a person without causing them injury. If he or she isn't alone, then a suspicious or dangerous person is generally going to be less inclined to resist arrest simply because they can see more than one officer nearby. Um, and more of that danger, you'll go to four now.
Thank you. Will, Proudy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman and the city council for recognizing me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. In light of recent events, I call for this body and Police Chief Parrish to reevaluate the Catati PD's use of force policies. A useful framework in line with 21st century policing is presented on 8can'twait.org, a project of Campaign Zero. Campaign Zero was founded in 2015 by activists seeking to reduce the number of police killings, which disproportionately affect minority communities. Their efforts have resulted in many changes in policy and American policing. These reforms are data-based objectives examining best practices currently in place by major American police departments. Departments that adopt these policies are significantly less likely to experience traumatic police killings. The policies are shown to also increase officer safety and have no negative effect on crime rate. My independent review of Catati PD's current use of force policies indicates that we are currently in line with only three of the eight proposals. In the interest of time, I will begin by highlighting areas in which I see room for improvement. One, the requirement to de-escalate situations when possible. Two, the establishment of a use of force continuum that explicitly defines which tactics are appropriate based on a subject's level of resistance. small thing, which is for you to consider allowing us some form of oversight of police performance and their funding. We're also asking for a review of the qualified immunity policies and to have body cameras put on all police officers. Use support by officers in Rialto, California went down by sixty percent after police began to be required to wear those body cameras. That stat is from The Guardian and also Truth in Media. My friend and neighbor Will Proudy mentioned to me that over half the city budget, uh, funds the police. We think it would serve us better to put a bit more of that funding into other types of services, and that might help us to have less need of the police. Uh, some good places we could put that extra funding are housing for the homeless, education in drug addiction, and mental health services. Mentally stable people with places to live don't go around the neighborhood brandishing weapons and yelling invectives or doing their business in public places. We don't need more funding to pay for more weapons for the police. They need to be better trained in de-escalation tactics and non-injurious and non-lethal use of force. If the situation is dangerous, the police officer shouldn't be dispatched to that situation alone or should call for backup. In this way, they can arrest a person without causing them injury. If he or she isn't alone, then a suspicious or dangerous person is generally going to less inclined to resist arrest simply because they can see more than one officer nearby. Um, and more of that, thank you. I'll yield the floor now.
Thank you. Will, Proudy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman and the city council for recognizing me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. In light of recent events, I call for this body and Police Chief Parrish to reevaluate the Khatati PD's use of force policies. A useful framework in line with 21st century policing is presented on eightcan'twait.org, a project of Campaign Zero. Campaign Zero was founded in 2015 by activists seeking to reduce the number of police killings, which disproportionately affect minority communities. Their efforts have resulted in many changes in policy and American policing. These reforms are data-based objectives examining best practices currently in place by major American police departments. Departments that adopt these policies are significantly less likely to experience traumatic police killings. The policies are shown to also increase officer safety and have no negative effect on crime rate. My independent review of Khatati PD's current use of force policies indicates that we are currently in line with only three of the eight proposals. In the interest of time, I will begin by highlighting areas in which I see room for improvement. One, the requirement to de-escalate situations when possible. Two, the establishment of a use of force continuum that explicitly defines which tactics are appropriate based on a subject's level of resistance. Coupled with a policy of de-escalation, this would require officers to scale down uses of force in proportion to increased compliance during an encounter. Three, the ban of chokeholds. I move for the ban of these holds or their classification as a use of deadly force at a minimum. Four, the requirement that deadly force may be used only after all possible alternatives are exhausted. Five, finally, the requirement of documentation of any use of force, including the brandishing of a police weapon to initiate compliance. I believe this reporting should be transparent and available to the public. Documenting uses of force could help the city to avoid costly litigation. Ask you to place on the agenda an objective review of these policies, which includes community members. We want to know who is writing the current policies. Please consider taking the time to reevaluate these policies in the interests of public safety. If given more time, I'm happy to answer questions from council members regarding my analysis of specific issues with any of the current policies I have mentioned. I will share my findings with this body by email. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Adrian?
Good evening. I'm Adrian Lobby and I live on Kingston Way in Khatati. I didn't come here tonight to make accusations. There's a lot about the Khatati Police Department that you council members, Chief Parrish, and staff and other people know much better than I do. I know that. What I also know is that the Khatati Police Budget is approximately $3.7 million a year from our general fund. Our entire city spends over $6.8 million a year from that fund, only that. In round numbers, we have a $7 million budget and well over half, $4 million, goes to law enforcement. Obviously, like me, there are Khatati residents who are interested in knowing how that $4 million is spent and whether or not there are better ways to protect and serve those of us who live here. We need to look at the job we're asking the police to do. We need to analyze the issues they're called to solve, as well as the way they handle those issues. Are we expecting the police to do tasks that would be better accomplished by social workers or other professionals? Given the protests and revelations of the last two weeks, we especially need to find out if the police are citing and arresting black and brown people at a higher rate than white people. Are they arresting poor people at a higher rate than well-off people? And what happens to those who are arrested? Do they end up continually cycling through the criminal justice system? Or do they return to our community through restorative justice processes, community service, or after being exonerated? Do they return to us with the ability to take on responsibility and a role in our community? Once, we had a police auxiliary commission in Khatati. Perhaps that should be reinstated. We can answer some of the questions I'm asking by taking a serious look at the police data that's already collected. But we won't find out how Khatati residents experience their police force unless we ask them. And we need to do that in a way that protects people's anonymity. I hope that the council will appoint an ad hoc committee to work with our group and other anti-police violence advocates to address three or four issues. As Will said, we want you to review the use of force policy. We'd like you to design an outreach system, particularly to black, brown, and poor residents, so we can find out what they think is going on. We'd like you to review existing records of policing in Khatati and the function of the defunct police auxiliary commission. And finally, to discuss any other important and connected issues that arise. We're asking you to agendize an item that will discuss Khatati's use of force policy and these related topics at your next meeting. I realize that I'm asking for a lot of work. But as you know, the Roanoke Park Police killed an unarmed man in a similar way that black men have been killed around the country. Let's do this work now, so we don't have to think about all this after somebody is dead. Thank you very much for your time.
Laura Spark, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm here to ask today, today to ask you for three things. First, I'd like to ask that you make a commitment to sign the Obama Foundation Mayor's pledge to reduce the use of force policy, uh, sorry, to review the Khatati use of force policies. Other major cities that have signed this pledge include Dallas, Atlanta, Reno, Sacramento, San Francisco. I think if it's good enough for all of those cities, it's good enough for us too. Um, second, I'd like to ask you to commit to involving the community in any review of the use of force policies and to involving the community in creating some sort of citizens' oversight board, um, that can review use of force complaints from the police department. And third, I'd like to ask that you place a discussion on these matters on the agenda for the next, or at least for a future city council meeting. Like Will, I also read through the City of Khatati, um, use of force policies this weekend, and I found some things in there that were sort of hard to read, um, regarding chokeholds and keratin restraints. They're discouraged, especially for use within our use of force policy, um, especially used on children, pregnant women, the elderly, and individuals who have Down syndrome are specifically called out in the, in the policy. But then it says, if the officer believes the need outweighs the risk, then they can use them. I don't want to look at the community where people like have, have their necks choked because an officer believed that the need outweighed the risk. Another area that I was disturbed by in the policy was that the word de-escalation only showed up once in the entire Section 300 use of force section, and it was only in a definition to state that it was, did not mean the same thing as retreat. I think it's unacceptable that de-escalation is alluded to in several places, but it's never really spelled out. The eight can't wait, uh, recommendations state that, uh, had a required use of force continuum required de-escalation. So I really wish that we had more than just a glancing, passing mention of them in our use of force policies. The, when a use of force complaint arises, the, um, board that's convened to review it contains no civilians. It's only officers and other peace officers. So I would love to see that civilians have some input into that. There are several other problems with the use of force policies, but I think we need to have an inclusive, large discussion where the entire community can lay on these. The first line of the Khatati Police Mission Statement is, "We, the members of the Khatati Police Department, are committed to being responsive to our community in the delivery of quality services." So I'd ask that the police and the city council be responsive now and sign the Mayor's pledge, the Obama Foundation Mayor's pledge, commit to involving the community in reviewing the use of force policies, and place this on a future agenda.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Carol, go ahead.
I'm Carol Williams. I live at 361 East Bull Street in Khatati, and I have lived in Khatati for forty-six years. Um, I would like to support, uh, the previous speakers, uh, who are, have asked to, for the city council to agendize review of police policy, uh, use of force, and also look at the amount of funds that are designated to support the use of force. And I'd also like to point out that today, the San Francisco Police Chief announced his willingness to defund portions of his budget that are allocated for use of force and, um, consider their reallocation for services to the community. Thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to, uh, your future report and, uh, public hearing about the use of force, and I will definitely plan to attend that. Thank you.
Lori Alderman, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, first of all, um, one of the speakers talked about anonymity. I can't say that word right. Um, you, you go ahead. With your Zoom calls, you added that into this meeting, you broke the Brown Act once again, and that now we're required to put in our name and our email address to address, to get on Zoom. That's a Brown Act. We've worked with the, um, uh, violation. We've worked with the, since these remote meetings with the District Attorney's Office, and it's still an issue. Um, obviously, these others knew how to get, having so many hoops, and now we have to even go even farther. The other thing is, these other citizens are not aware that the citizen, City of Khatati Police Chief Parrish and some of the council members are, um, there is a civil rights, um, free speech, um, and, um, federal case in the Oakland courthouse by me. Um, and it has to do how with the City of Khatati has, for ninety-nine percent of their votes, um, in the last decade, have, um, been unanimous. In 2018 and 2019, all, um, votes were unanimous. They, um, will, there's not so much racial discrimination, but if you speak against the city, you are treated differently, and that's what this is. It's not a frivolous lawsuit. It's been in the, um, it's been by a civil rights judge in Oakland for nine months now. Um, I'm still waiting. It's, there's nine week, nine weeks I'm waiting for a major decision from her. It's the same courthouse where the, um, court officer was shot. And, um, the, the judge is wonderful, and she believes me, and she believes my voice. The City of Khatati has ignored my voice for years, done actions after action to suppress my public comment. Um, and you guys need to bring this into the, that you're doing, talking about the big issue of like the Obama whatever thing. You need to bring it down to Khatati. You need to bring it down to the specific things that the, are the, um, goals of my lawsuit. It was, it's not money. I go to, mine would go in a special needs trust. It's social justice and police accountability and not, and dealing with their, um, with their institutional dysfunction. Thank you.
David Healy, go ahead. Mr. Healy, are you able to unmute yourself? Unfortunately, I don't think he's able to talk for some reason, so, Mr. Healy, if you can hear me, if you can possibly dial in on a home phone, that would, uh, that would work. Uh, we can also come back to Mr. Healy if that's okay with you, Madam Mayor. And we'll move on to David Goki. Go ahead, please.
Hello, uh, thank you. Uh, my name's David Goki. Uh, I live on Flamingo Road in Khatati. I'd like to echo the request of Will, Laura, uh, and others who have asked that members of this council add an agenda item to evaluate implementing the so-called eight can't wait policies. Very briefly, these policies are banning chokeholds and stringer holds, requiring de-escalation from law officers, requiring warning before shooting, requiring exhausting all alternatives before shooting, giving officers a duty to intervene, which is requiring them to intervene to stop excessive force used by other officers and report these incidents. Uh, banning shooting at moving vehicles and requiring a use of force continuum, which is restricting the most severe types of force to the most severe situations, and finally requiring comprehensive reporting. These guidelines strike me as common sense, non-political, and frankly, the bare minimum that we can ask from the officers that serve this community. They require simple things while leaving room for the officers to judge what is appropriate and what is reasonable in each individual situation. Most importantly, they're backed by solid data indicating a large reduction in police killings when all are implemented. Maybe these aren't a problem in Khatati today, and if so, that should make it even easier for us to pass. I love living in Khatati, and I hope the city council can help make it a better place for all of its residents. Please let our city be an example to the rest of the Bay Area and add an agenda item to implement these policies. Thank you.
Teddy Bueker, go ahead. Very sweet.
Okay, is that better?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I really just wanted to say that I also support, um, all the people who've spoken so incredibly eloquently and logically about this issue and support them in asking you to put it onto the, uh, city agenda. Um, I agree with everything that they have said, uh, so far. I haven't researched it anything like, in, into anything like the same extent that they have. But, um, I'm glad that this, that they're bringing this issue to Khatati. Not that I'm aware of complaints about Khatati police or anything like that, but I agree that it would be good to, to, uh, get the right guidelines on the books now before anything happens, rather than let it go any longer. And I think it's incredible to see the wave, um, that's going through society at the moment in really trying to bring about a huge transformation. And, um, I hope it can be a hundred percent, more than a hundred percent successful to living in Khatati. Thank you.
Tessie Barton, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Tessie Barton. Um, I've been a Khatati resident for some time now, and just like before, I want to support everyone else on the same issue. I'd love to see this as an agenda item. Um, love to ban the use of chokeholds. I think at this point, there's just no need for them. Um, I'd like to emphasize the use and the need of de-escalation before getting there. Um, I'd also like to look at into allocating Khatati PD funds going back into the community. Um, you know, hearing some of these facts that I didn't even know these numbers, that over half or about half of the community's budget is going into the police force in Khatati, I just, uh, it doesn't seem like it makes sense or adds up. So thank you so much for hearing me, and, uh, yeah, I'd love to have this be part of the community and add it to an agenda item. Thank you.
And Mayor Skilman, we'll try David Healy one more time. David, go ahead. Okay, we'll go, uh, Neil, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hello. Um, I'd just like to say I don't see any danger within Khatati for the public spaces and the statues. I think people have been very, very reasonable, um, in their, um, the public spaces and quite within the rights of people to get out there and try and echo the horrendous situation that has happened in other places, um, in the U.S. So I'm surprised that a citizen would request a waste of police time for just carrying away cardboard signs that have been in, um, on Jumbo D.O. statue, and that's a tradition within Khatati. Um, the country has been through a horrendous process. We're seeing some of these, um, pretty close to executions or murders. Um, I, I do think we want to follow the governor's nuisance line of doing a review, and I think it would be very useful to hold that as a, as a public process. And as much really to have the, um, police sort of see that citizens are involved in the community. I, I do think we have, um, had some very good, um, reports in the past on the police side of things. There is a community policing that is going on. Um, but I, I do think that it's a very useful process to go through and, um, review these. Particularly the cartoid hold is just, it just doesn't seem like, um, police should be being trained for that. And I, I do think it's, you know, it's Khatati and it's Sonoma County. There are many jurisdictions that go together. Um, Khatati, I believe- Um, Katati, I believe gets its training from Sonoma County, so there's going to be a requirement also to review all the way the police sort of do, um, their training and stuff. In the end, the police are here to help us. There are a bunch of, um, people around who I do think we need to, um, who plainly are thugs and including the president, I think is in that category. So, um, I do see that we need a good ask for a review. So, thank you very much. You'll hang on.
Thank you, and Mr. Healy, if you've also dialed in, just a reminder to dial star nine if, uh, if your phone number is visible.
I think, can you hear me this time?
I can, go ahead, thank you.
I'm so sorry about that. I'll make it so quick. Um, I would like, I would like to address the current use of force policies in Katati and urge the city to ban all chokeholds and highly consider redistributing the funds allocated to the Katati police force. I would like the city to acknowledge and support the Black Lives Matter movement and we would like the police use of force and their budget to be on the agenda of the next city council meeting. Thank you so much, I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, and Mayor Skilman, that'll be it for public comment. Okay, so that covers citizens' business and consent calendar. Um, and then I don't, I wanted to see if, um, uh, anybody on staff wanted to comment on any of that. Obviously, they're not on the agenda, but I just wanted to see if anybody wanted to comment before we move on to the next item. Okay, hearing none. I will move on to consent calendar. We have items A, B, C, D, and E.
This is Councilmember Delloso. I will move to approve items A through E.
Thank you, and I noticed that, um, Councilmember Harvey has her hand up. Did she need to jump in there, Councilmember?
I was gonna make that motion, but I'm happy to second the motion forward.
I'll, I'll look for the hands better this time. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um, can we please have a roll call vote for passing of the consent calendar items? Councilmember Delloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Lehman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so that's, uh, five oh two pass consent calendar items. So, we'll move on to item number nine, um, direction on future agenda items. And I see Councilmember Delloso, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, I thought I'd follow protocol and actually raise my hand, thank you. Um, so that was, uh, a very good discussion, I think, that we had there of thirteen different speakers, um, and even if the speakers didn't come to the meeting tonight, I certainly would encourage us as a council and our staff to have a discussant, discussion on the use of force policy. Um, I read through it a couple of times this weekend. I pulled up, uh, a number of very positive statements that were in there, um, not trying to be biased, but looking at some of the language that is used. And I believe one of our speakers had mentioned, uh, something about body cameras, I believe it was, uh, Ms. Hirsch. And Katati was actually the first city, if I'm not mistaken, the chief or the city manager can correct me, uh, the first city in Sonoma County where all the officers had body cameras on. So, um, I, I think we take this very seriously and again, I don't know, since the mayor and the city manager work on these future agenda items, um, I'm hoping like sometime in maybe July or August, we could have a, a discussion. Um, I'm not sure it's able to come up on the very next meeting, but I would like to put that out there and see if there's support from the rest of the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I also see, um, Councilmember Lehman has his hand up. Go ahead, Councilmember Lehman.
Yeah, I was kind of found myself walking down the same road as my colleague, uh, Councilmember Delloso. I don't think comes as a surprise tonight that there's a, a great interest in the community, both locally, nationwide, actually worldwide, uh, to review law enforcement policies to ensure that they're following best practices, that they're up to date and, and that they meet the needs of the times. Um, so with that, you know, I believe we owe the community an opportunity to hear a discussion, how up to date are local community policing policies are, how our use of force standards work, and how they measure up with emerging new proposed standards like the eight can't wait. Um, now, from a quick review myself, from what I've seen, including letters from Mr. Potty, I'm not sure if there's, there's that much daylight, uh, as I would expect with a small progressive community policing department, but nevertheless, I think that discussion's important. So, I agree, I'd like to see an agenda item to give us the opportunity to review these policies, to have the opportunity for discussion, and to see if we find in areas that can be further improved and potentially to make those improvements. Um, so, uh, I would like to see that on the agenda too. I would agree, I think trying to put that on the next meeting is a bit little difficult, but it's obviously something that's timely, so I would be sort of supportive of seeing that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and I see Councilmember Harvey has their hand up as well. Go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, yes, I would support, um, my colleagues, um, and just not to repeat things, um, but more to add, I, I think that there is also, um, more education that needs to happen on our budget because I think that, um, there's a little bit of a misunderstanding about the budget. Um, there are multiple funds and the police happen to come out of the general fund, but there are other funds, so Public Works gets spread out along the other, uh, some of the other funds, so I think we can do, uh, a little bit more educating on that because when one small group comes out of only one fund, um, it will definitely mathematically, um, look like, um, it's a bigger hunk of the pie and I think that that's, um, been put out there a couple of times, um, uh, and, and it's just, I think, more education that needs to happen. And I think along with that education, I think that we need to provide more information about, um, you know, how our officers are trained, why the policies are what they are, um, where they come from, the training that's provided, um, along with that. So, we have to be very careful in that we don't want to have policies that don't give us an opportunity to, um, have the appropriate training to go along with those policies. So, I think that whole discussion, um, around that, I think, would be helpful to the whole community because I know we are part of REMF, which is our insurer, and we are part of POST, um, which is the police officer's, um, standard training. So, I think that there's a lot of things behind the scenes that, um, support the policies that we're on that I, that I think the community, um, would benefit. So, I absolutely support putting this on agenda, um, and educating all aspects of that.
Okay, thank you. Tessie, vice mayor Moore as well?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, I don't want to, um, uh, repeat and be redundant, but, but I would support my fellow council members and I think that this is a, uh, a situation of utmost importance. I think Katati does a lot of things very well, but as we review things and as we move forward, uh, we're always looking for ways to improve, um, and I would support this and I would support this as a agendized item sooner rather than later, um, while it's, it's very fresh in people's minds and, and maybe there is some, um, some trauma associated with this. I think the sooner that we address these and the sooner we can, um, correct any deficiencies that we may have and reiterate, uh, some of the strengths that we do have. So, I would, I would, uh, support this, uh, moving forward, um, sooner than later. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, it's the chief. I wanted to, uh, a comment regarding, uh, what Councilman Delloso said about the body cams and I have to go to the thing?
Oh, sure, go ahead, Chief Parrish.
So, um, the councilman's correct, uh, Katati Police Department was by far the, um, the first law enforcement agency in Sonoma County to do full deployment of body worn cameras. And beyond that, it's associated with a cloud, so it's secured in the cloud as well. Uh, just a few other things, so, um, this weekend, we had two demonstrations at the Katati, uh, Police Building. Um, there were, um, there were great demonstrations, they were peaceful, they were in the spirit of Dr. King, and I wanted to recognize and thank everybody, uh, who participated in that. Um, and that was about our topic, about police, uh, reform. Um, so, the Katati Police Department is not perfect, I know that. I know in the United States, that law enforcement's not, not perfect. Um, and I'm sure that in Sonoma County here, that all the chiefs and the sheriffs are willing to, um, listen to public comment and input. Um, we welcome that. Uh, Katati PD does use best practices. We start, when we hire people here at Katati Police Department, we use a retired police detective lieutenant who is a certified, um, PI and he does our background investigations thoroughly. And anybody that he identifies as a problem or potential problem or future problem, we do not hire that personnel, that's, that's where it starts. Um, as far as de-escalation, um, our, all of our officers, um, attend a crisis intervention training and that is to deal with people that are in mental health crisis. So, all of our officers go through that training. In addition, uh, the best practices are just having officers, but at Katati PD, we even send the dispatchers to the crisis intervention training so that the dispatchers can recognize when somebody's in crisis and let the officers know ahead of time. Um, so, just so you know, our police policies are, it's a company called Lexipol and just about everybody in California and other states use this policy and it can be changed. Um, but Lexipol ensures that policies are constitutional and current with the latest federal and state laws as well as any case law. And I do want to share with you that California and policing, as far as use of force, is one of the top fifty states, um, for stringent guidelines. So, in two thousand and nineteen, Assembly Bill three ninety-two updated the use of force guidelines for peace officers. And like I said, it's one of the most stringent in the, in the nation and it addresses nearly all of the use of force policies in the Obama past force from which the eight can't wait is actually derived. Um, and so, I'm a member of the California Police Chiefs Association. Our association worked with the Assembly on this bill, so did the State Sheriff's Association. And again, I'm sure that locally, so locally, we have the Sonoma County Law Enforcement Chiefs Association, which I'm a member of. And again, um, I just wanted to share with you, I'm sure that my group locally here is willing to, um, listen to our citizens and go from there. Um, beyond that, um, I, I hope you would just follow, uh, the Police Department on social media, uh, Facebook and Instagram, um, and every year, we have a national night out through COVID nineteen. I hope to do that in October, we usually have it in August. I hope to see you at national night out. Um, as far as the carotid restraint, that's what has been, uh, called the chokehold tonight, it's the carotid restraint. Actually, uh, I've already directed, uh, police staff here in Katati that we will no longer use the carotid restraint. And in fact, it has been decertified by the California Peace Officers Standing in Training. So, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to express my appreciation for all of the participants today. I think you almost outnumber the panelists, which is wonderful to see this much civic involvement and I really appreciate, um, people's, uh, open mindedness to wanting to get the more information rather than jumping to a conclusion and also very impressed by folks who did their research. Um, so, thank you all very much for the time that you put into this, um, and we'll definitely be addressed again. So, let's move on to item ten for public hearings. And the first item we have is the Jamie Lane five lot affordable housing subdivision. I believe I'm turning this over to, all right, quick, Noah House.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman, members of the council and the community staff who are with us today. I'm going to, as I identified the item before the commission this evening, is the Jamie Lane residential subdivision. Uh, I'm going to attempt to not control the PowerPoint, great. Uh, the project is a request for approval of a vested tentative map, delivering a final design review to allow construction of a five unit residential endfill project, which is located at the intersection of Ryan Lane and East Katati Avenue. Uh, if approved, this, these actions would allow the subdivision of an existing zero point six seven acre parcel into five new individual lots and allow the construction of five new single family homes on those lots. Uh, all five of the homes are proposed to be, uh, deed restricted affordable housing and they are identified as intended to serve moderate income individuals. Uh, there's significant amount of background on this site and this project, uh, as discussed in the staff report, but just to summarize, uh, two thousand and four, a rezoning of the site and a, uh, different tentative map were approved, allowing up to ten units to be developed on this property. Uh, those, that project was never built and in two thousand and nine, the former redevelopment agency bought the property intending to, uh, allow it to be developed for affordable housing. And shortly after, they entered into a contract with the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County to develop that site with affordable housing. Uh, they have, the Housing Land Trust is the applicant for the current Jamie Lane project as well. And Deb and, uh, Steve Lafranci and their team are, uh, going to provide a pre- presentation after the staff presentation. In two thousand and twelve, uh, separate six unit project was approved but never built on the site and then in two thousand and nineteen, a new application was filed proposing to develop the current project, that's before the council this evening. In March of this year, uh, staff sent out a notice of application to all the surrounding residents in order to notify them that the project was, a new project had been proposed and was moving to the development review process and, and requesting their input, uh, and identification of any concerns they have. And then, just last month, uh, the planning commission reviewed the project and voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve it by then. To provide a little context, uh, the property identified here with the red star, as I didn't, as mentioned, is on the corner of Ryan Lane and East Katati Avenue. It's primarily surrounded by residential development, but does have a commercial parcel to the east and then it's directly across the street from Santara Way and the, uh, Smart Station. Next slide is a, uh, aerial photograph zoomed in a little bit to provide more of the context, but the property identified with the yellow square or rectangle as, and it's undeveloped. This, this slide demonstrates, uh, the, how the property is proposed to be developed. Uh, the five new homes would front onto Ryan Lane. Garages are proposed, just reloaded, alley access garages are proposed in the rear of the homes. Uh, the site would be, uh, all new fences surrounding the site would be completely rebuilt. And then there is an emergency vehicle access off of, uh, East Katati that would only be open, uh, if needed by emergency personnel to provide a secondary access to the site. This slide is the same site plan, but identifying that it is proposed to be fully landscaped, um, and new street trees would be proposed, um, along East Katati Avenue. Again, just providing a little bit more context and, and detail on the proposal. These are the elevations, uh, proposed for the project that are in the packet and the, uh, the front elevations identified there is, is actually how they would be developed on the site. So, that is the five individual homes, the front, the, the five individual homes as they- So that is the five individual homes, the front, the five individual homes as they would front onto Ryan Lane. And then there's two just zoomed in versions of those, just give a lot of it more detail. As identified in the staff report, the site's zoned, or I'm sorry, designated medium density residential by the general plan, which allows up to eight to 10 units per acre. Uh, staff has found that the project implements several general plan policies in that it's an infill project adjacent to services and maintains the character of the neighborhood while also furthering affordable housing. Um, the Zonio site is, uh, surrounded by made neighborhood median density. It has a rather unique planned development zoning district, um, because when the project was previously approved, it was rezoned to a planned development or PD district. But that PD essentially, um, was development specific. And so as staff analyzed the project, we looked at the policies, the applicable policies in that existing, uh, planned development approval, as well as the neighborhood median density zoning district, which is the other zoning that implements that general plan designation. As identified in the staff report, the project meets the parking height, frontage and lot size requirements. But as an affordable housing project, it is entitled to request concessions. Uh, and this project is requesting three concessions, uh, specifically for the set-backs, the lot coverage and the lot width. That's further discussed in the staff report. Um, the primary need for these concessions is the fact that the project is proposing alley loaded garages. So as you can imagine, uh, providing an access drive and serving all covered parking in the rear of the homes while maintaining the street frontage of only the residential development, the homes themselves, requires more, uh, space in the property for the access lane to be, uh, routed to the garages. And then it, it pushed the homes closer to Ryan Lane, which reduce, uh, resulted in the requested, uh, front setback concession. As identified, it is a vesting tentative map. Um, the SEQA analysis, uh, identified that the project qualifies as a Class II categorical exemption under the infill, uh, exemption. The average lot size is about 5,800 square feet, but it's, uh, nets out a little bit less than that as each lot also contains the portion of their access drive. Uh, Ryan Lane is a private street. This is jointly maintained by the surrounding developments, and this project, project would participate in that joint maintenance. And, uh, access and use of Ryan Lane and all of the, uh, the private drive is dictated through established and proposed easements. Um, sewer water facilities are located in Ryan, Ryan Lane, and there are adequate storm drain facilities to serve the project. Um, with three yards of design review requests, uh, it's five detached single family homes with detached two car garages. The project does implement craftsman elements. Um, all homes are approximately 15 feet in height, ranging from 13 to 1500 square feet in size, three bedroom, two baths. They're proposing to utilize the common yard frontage type. Uh, and all of the projects, or all of the proposed homes do have a minimum of about 11 feet for the front setback. Um, as identified, the two required parking spaces are covered garage, reloaded garages, and then each, uh, parcel is provided one additional parking space for guests, and the landscaping will be fully, uh, water efficient. Uh, in response to the notice of application, staff received several comments from the neighboring homeowners associations, and they were primarily, uh, identifying concerns over parking. There seems to be some parking impacts in that neighborhood, as I'm sure the council is aware of. And the concern was that they did not want, uh, any additional impacts from this project on those parking requirements from, so on those parking issues. Staff had multiple back and forth conversations with the HOA presidents, uh, and provided them full copies of the, uh, easements, which identify how the parking is to be utilized and allocated amongst the three properties, including the project site. And, um, no additional comments were received after all of the information was provided to the, those, uh, interested parties, and nobody provided additional feedback to the planning commission or at the planning commission meeting. Based on that, staff is assuming that the concerns were addressed through the communication. However, we have not received an email explicitly stating that. Uh, but all parties are governed by this existing easement, and any, uh, uh, concerns or disagreement that's amongst those parties are civil matters between those parties, and it's explicitly stated as such in the easement governing the parking and use of the Ryan Lane site. Uh, planning commission recommended city council approve all entitlements, uh, with a unanimous vote. And in Katati, if, uh, any element of a project requires city council approval, such as a subdivision, which does require city council approval, all elements of the project rise to the city council for decision, which is why the design review is also before the city council for action. With that, it is recommended by the community development department and the planning commission that the city council review the proposed project and adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from SEQA under a Class 32 categorical exemption and approve the requested tentative map and design review for the Jamie Lane five lot residential subdivision. And I am available for any questions. And, uh, Dev and the land trust, uh, team is here to present shortly after.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'll bring it back to council first and see if there are any questions from staff. Okay, I see Councilmember Lamon, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, Councilmember Lamon.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Yeah, just one question, Mr. House. Uh, so one thing caught my eye. Uh, first of all, I want to say this is a well-designed looking project, having affordable workplace housing, uh, the smart station makes a lot of sense. Uh, the only concern that rose to mind for me was that in order to meet that standard, these houses, instead of being the more traditional built on site or are stick built, as we like to say, are prefab, uh, to some degree, and then finished on site. And I didn't really have an image or a render to look at some just elevation line drawings. And my concern was, will this match the look and feel, the quality of the other more traditional homes on Ryan Lane? Now, doing some research on MH Advantage Homes, I saw some pictures that indicates that certainly quite likely, but I wondered if I could have you or the design team just confirm that for me? Because I'd want to make sure that in addition to Ryan Lane, it only makes the place better, as opposed to anything that might be problematic in terms of appearance.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamon. I'll let the design team, uh, kind of respond to that, but I, I will say modular housing and modular construction is, is kind of a trend we're likely to see more of moving into the future for development projects. It allows builders to control, uh, a lot of the timeline issues and even actually have more control over the quality of the construction, uh, because it's in a factory setting versus, you know, a job site setting. Uh, but I, I will say, in looking at the proposed materials, uh, for the exterior finishes, they're all consistent with typical residential stick built, uh, finish types.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Harvey has her hand up as well. Go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Hey, I just wanted to chime in on that. You know, uh, I, I think Noah's point that, uh, manufactured housing has come a long way. Having, um, gone through at least one of the facilities that, um, does this, it really does, um, allow for a lot to be done in a very controlled environment, and it, you're not, um, confined by the weather, and they're just able to do so much more consistently. So I think it's come a long way from, you know, 20 or 30 years ago in what we thought, um, were manufactured, um, items. I mean, some of the ones now, you know, they go all the way to having them fully furnished and all the electrical and wiring and plumbing and all that, you know, attached outside where, where, um, those, um, professions can come in and, and easily, um, attach those, um, units. So I, I think we've come a long way. I also want to, um, thank staff. Um, I had a few questions that they were able, um, to answer for me earlier. So, um, with that, I will turn it back to you.
Okay, and then Noah, was there a further part of the presentation, or were we? I was confused.
Yeah, so, so Dev Getchis of the Housing Land Trust, she's the executive director. I think she is teed up to give the, kind of the, her presentation, basically on the model that the land trust uses and, and, uh, answer any additional questions. The whole design team is here. Uh, we are, we, we as staff and her team are able to answer and address any questions or concerns from the public or the council. And Dev, I think they're ready if you are.
I'm not, uh, there. Guys, I don't have my screen because I have yours. Thank you for doing that. So my name is Dev Getchis. Thank you, Noah. That was an excellent presentation. And Madam Mayor, council members, I'm delighted to be with you this evening and to present a little bit on the Housing Land Trust model. Before I get started, I want to, um, point out that we have already partnered with you and that you've got five land trust homes in partnership with us at Woodland Health. So, uh, those are perpetually affordable as these will be going forward. So our goal is to house our workforce, and it's all about the paycheck. So the price of the home is tied to the income that the workforce is earning so that it remains affordable in perpetuity. It's completely divorced from the market, your price value, and any of the other indexes. Because the only thing that really can determine what is truly affordable is what someone is earning in our community. The second part of the land trust model is that we're creating a community asset. The land beneath the home is set aside for the benefit of the public. So just as parkland is set aside for the benefit of the public forever in the community, the land underneath the home is going to be used for only one purpose, and that is for the house that sits on that land to remain affordable for a specific income household. We serve, uh, many of these cities in Sonoma County, and we already, as I mentioned, have a partnership with you and, uh, look forward to continuing that. Our partnership generally works with the city, the developer, and the land trust. This particular project is a little bit different because it's 100% affordable. It's not just inclusionary, and it is really a highest and best use of underutilized land. And what we're doing here is also creating a prototype to show that the land that is in and around town that isn't penciling for market weight development, where you might have your traditional inclusionary, can actually be put to good use to create housing for our local workforce. We are here to be your adjunct staff, to provide you with the capacity to create affordable housing and to work closely with your staff and to help you meet your housing goals. So we think of ourselves as the, um, entity that helps to lessen the burden of government to provide housing for its citizens. So how does the model work? The land is deeded to the trust, and we hold it as a benefit for the community, for the community in perpetuity. The house that sits on top of the land is sold to the family for a 30-year fixed mortgage tied to their paycheck. The land underneath the house is leased to that family, and it is leased through a 99-year renewable ground lease. So the person buying that house is not paying market rate for that land. That land is used to subsidize the affordability, and it is, um, acting and feeling like ownership, but it is not costing the family a price that would otherwise cost them to maybe leave the area because they were just priced out of the private market. So the land trust model is a path to acquire both land and home without the price that is out of reach. The process for creating a project is for the land, um, to be, uh, owned by the city or by the developer, and the land trust comes in and partners to say that that is going to be the subsidy that's going to be used. The city is really driving the criteria. So whatever your goals are for your arena numbers, for your housing element, your policies, our job is to make sure that that criteria and those goals are met and fulfilled. And in this case, the homes will be a moderate income because you have other projects that are balancing out your, um, achievements for housing that you have mapped out for the city of Katati. We are able to draft all of the regulatory agreements that are the same across the county so that that is not an added burden to the staff. We can work directly with your attorney. We work, um, with our attorney. But at this point, the, uh, documents are boilerplate and have already been executed at Woodland, Woodland Health. We've gotten this far in the entitlement process. This really has been quite the project. We've, um, we've been working on it for many, many years, up to 10 years at this point. And I think that we have finally figured out a way to, um, to make a pencil and to find a good fit for it. Our job is to qualify the buyers, again, based on your criteria. Most of the people that we serve live and work locally. Most of our homeowners are teachers, um, city employees, medical employees, people who are the fabric of our community, that have careers that make the community as vibrant as it is and function as it should, but are not able to buy that home on the market. So our job is to say, thank you for doing what you're doing to support the community. Stop printing, start owning, put some roots down, make sure that families are housing secure, and that they have their financial future planned in such a way that they know what to expect from their housing costs, and that they have that sense of security. The home is built, in this case, we are going to be employing the MH Advantage, which I'll talk about in a little bit, and Mark Westfall is here from Renewal, answering specific questions. And while the units are being built, we're qualifying the buyers, and then we close that test ground. What we look for to qualify a buyer is not very different from what one would need to qualify to buy any house. What is different is that our qualifying ratios, that is, the amount of money spent on the total housing cost shouldn't exceed more than about a third of what someone's paycheck is. And then we look at the total debt, including the new housing cost, and we don't want to see that exceed past 43%. This is insurance. We know that our homeowners succeed when the ratios make sense and they're able to carry that mortgage and manage their finances. You can decide if you want to have a preference, the qualified applicants who have lived or work in the city, and, um, that is, is, is something that I can work with, with on the staff level, or we can certainly discuss that tonight. So how do we keep the home affordable for subsequent buyers? Again, the price of the home is tied to the paycheck, not the market. The index tied to the resale is the area median income. That's a chart that comes out from the state every year. In order to keep the homes affordable to future buyers, our homeowners agree to sell their home for a limited price when they decide to move. So they buy their home for a restricted price that's affordable, and it's a paid forward model. The quality of life is improved because you're living in a beautiful house in a community where you want to live. And then when you're ready to move, whatever that is, you sell it to someone that's in the income level that you were in when you moved down. The maximum price is calculated based on what was paid initially, and the annual increase based on the change in that area median income chart that comes in. For example, these are real numbers from Sonoma County. The initial median income in 2006 for a family of four at 100%, which is median income, was $75,100. 10 years later, in 2016, the median income for that same family of four at 100% was $82,400. The change in income from 2006 to 2016 was 9.72%. Now, that increase could be more, it could be less, it depends upon... The change in income from 2006 to 2016 was 9.72%. Now that increase could be more, it could be less, it depends upon what the AMI change is. The trajectory, the historic track record for AMI is that it rises over time. We have had 16 resales and they've all been successful. So given this scenario, if the initial purchase price for that home in 2006 was $300,000 and if the change in median income, as we saw, is 9.72%, then the maximum amount that that family can sell their home for is $329,161 and yes, well said. So the total appreciation just from the AMI is $29,161. The total equity, however, is made up of more than that. The total equity, the amount that someone walks away with when they sell their house, is a combination of the appreciation, that's the $29,161 here, plus the debt reduction. Remember, they've been paying a mortgage, not rent. So whatever they retired on their mortgage, whatever principal they paid off, they get that back. And any down payment, which is generally not required, but if it is, they get that back. There is no equity sharing, there are no silent seconds, nothing. It's a 30-year fix and it's tied to AMI and whatever equity you build, you put that together and that is your equity. Stewardship matters. We are in touch with our homeowners every single month. By the time we sign at the close of escrow, we've been having conversations with them for over a year. We know our families and they know that we are their fierce advocate. We've had zero foreclosures. We know that part of that reason, and a big part of that reason, is because we are that network, that counseling entity, that support system that first-time homebuyers need to see. Our focus is not on how many homes we have. Our focus is on how many families we've served. We've served 100 families, we have 84 homes. We have homes where one house is now serving the fourth family. And each time that home has been sold, that homeowner has been able to go out and buy a market rate house. And the home has remained affordable without additional subsidy to the subsequent buyers. Because land is a finite resource. We only have so much of it and it takes so much to get a project done and off the ground as we all know, that all that equity, all that subsidy, all of that investment donation, grants, what have you, needs to be protected in subsidy retention so that it keeps on giving for generations is really the type of investment that we need to see in our community. So why does subsidy retention matter? We need to protect the public investment. This land is coming from the city of Katari. You are investing in it. We're going to protect it forever and it will continue to provide the affordability in future years and eliminate additional need for government and private subsidies as the units are resold. We're tying the subsidy to the unit, not the family. The family's going to pay what they can afford, period. Anything else to make it affordable is going to be front-loaded and it's going to be put into the unit, not given to the family in the form of the second or something like that. We're going to be maintaining income targeted workforce. If that house is meant to serve a family at median income, that's who's going to go in next and in subsequent sales. And we are together doing two things. We're creating community wealth because we're setting that land aside forever in Katari for that purpose. And we're creating personal wealth because someone has a chance to build equity while maintaining future affordability. It's a balance. City of Katari and the Housing Land Trust are continuing the partnership. Once again, we will be creating community wealth by preserving land that will benefit the community in perpetuity. We're partnering with a nonprofit, that's us, Housing Land Trust, to steward a finite resource that serves as a permanent subsidy to individual families, generation after generation. We're making homeownership a reality for the workforce in our community. We are recovering from so many devastating circumstances between the fires and the floods and so on. And this is a way to bring some certainty into our workforce. We're delivering stewardship to families to ensure successful homeownership. And we are strengthening the fabric of our community by providing our workforce a secure place to live. What is new this time around? Specifically with Jamie Lane, there's something else going on. In response to the fires, we have to find innovative ways to achieve our goals to create a housing for our workforce that is perpetually affordable. We're introducing a new prototype to the county and the state and the nation with MH Advantage Homes. Who is interested in this prototype? Well, we are certainly. We're doing this for our community in Katari. But we also have the county of Sonoma that's watching this and is investing funds to make this happen. The state of California, the governor is very interested in innovative housing models. And so we're working with his office and Calitrefei to be able to fund this piece, to be replicated. We're working directly with the federal policy at Fannie Mae in Washington DC and with the Director of Disaster, Resilience, and Recovery out of New Orleans of Houston. So that this project with the MH Advantage model can serve as a prototype and be replicated in Butte, in Dallas, in Houston, in New Orleans, and you know, I think right next to our Capitol Hill at this point. Why is our interest in this? Because we need to replicate a successful model and to do that, we need a prototype that is going to show the community that there is a system, there is a team in place, and that there is a methodology that can be easily replicated to get housing on the ground sooner and preserve it to serve our workforce for generations. Thank you so much for your attention and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
My pleasure.
I see Vice Mayor Moore has his hand up, so I'll see if there's any questions and then I will open it up for public comments after we check back with the council. Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is Getchis?
Yes.
Thank you for that presentation. That's pretty insightful and a lot of information. One of the things that I had a question on was for the applicants who are approved to purchase the home and not the land, does the Housing Land Trust fund for the home? Or is that, does that have to go through a conventional bank and are there issues with banking on that type of thing?
Not at all. We have a preferred lender, but any lender can do this. This is essentially a Fannie Mae product. And the land trust has a Community Land Trust letter that is attached to the ground lease approved by Fannie Mae. And there's absolutely no issue in giving loans. And in fact, our lender lends nationally because we've got so many homes and we are currently repaying a number of our homeowners to save some funds at this time. So there is absolutely no lending issue whatsoever for that 30-year fixed mortgage.
Well, that's terrific. Then I had some other questions, but they probably go back to the architectural firms on there and a design firm on there.
Okay, yeah.
So I can hold that until after public comment on there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I think this might be a nice time for me to just say a few words. My name's Mark Westfall and I'm with Renew Now Homes and we're going to be the company providing the homes as well as completing most of the construction in that community. So one of the questions that I heard come up a little bit earlier was are these going to fit into the community or look like the rest of the homes in the community? In a word, yes. And let me go into a little bit of detail about why that's going to happen and a little bit about what MH Advantage is. Because as someone mentioned earlier, it has come, you know, manufactured housing has come a long ways. From the days of when people considered a manufactured or a modular home to be something no less than maybe a trailer, oval home, something of that nature. So a couple of years ago, Fannie Mae came up with a program called MH Advantage. And the program was designed to be able to build homes in a community that would fit right into that community. And by doing so and building to a much higher standard, what you're getting is really a stick-built home that's built in a factory. And so if Fannie Mae says, if you'll do this, there will be a sticker attached on the inside of this home that identifies it as an MH Advantage home. So and by doing an MH Advantage home, some of the things that go into them are just starting with the exterior walls, they're all two-by-six, solid wood construction. These homes are not just set down on wheels or on the ground. While these homes are in the factory being built, we will be out there building the foundations. The foundation will be a permanent foundation so that when the home is finished and delivered, it will be set on a foundation that's permanent. They come with pitched roofs, you know, dual-pane windows, they're all Energy Star rated, which means that they have natural gas furnaces, all Energy Star appliances. They're heavier insulated than your basic stick-built home. And I'll just give you an idea, because of the extra thickness in the walls, you know, the floors alone have R38 blown in, the walls are R21, ceilings are R40 that's blown in. And so these homes are literally a stick-built home when you're done with them. Now, what does all that mean, you know, to the neighborhood or the community? Benefits are, as someone mentioned earlier, these are built in a controlled environment, meaning it's dry, it's inspected by HUD inspectors throughout the process. So the home does not leave the factory until it is 100% finished and inspected. They're, you know, these are precision-built homes. They're on a factory, just like if you think of it as a Mercedes-Benz factory, these homes are coming off just like that. But more important than all of that, or equally as important, is the impact it has on the community. So in a stick-built environment, you're going to be dealing with six to eight months of hammering, sawing, eight hours a day. These homes are delivered and set in place in one to three days and that's it. Now, there will be a little bit more work because the garages are all going to be stick-built. So you're going to have kind of a combination stick-built community with factory-built communities. And so with a home going up in one to three days per home, the garages all being done at the same time, you're going to have very little noise impact once construction gets started. And the homes themselves, you know, from start to finish, they take roughly about four months from start to finish. But in a factory environment, a home is built in roughly 12 to 15 days. It just takes that much time to get up to the front of that line so that you can get yours going. And we're working hard on making sure that we do this perfectly. This is a very important project. And as Dev mentioned, it's a pilot project. A pilot project that we are all absolutely committed to making this an incredible venture for everyone. So I hope that maybe that clarifies a little bit about what's going to go in there.
Okay, thank you for that information. So I'll quickly bring it back to council authority, follow-up questions that you have before I open it up for public comment. Okay, yes, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have some questions on some of the components of it that I didn't catch in the packet and maybe I overlooked it, but I didn't see anything regarding solar on these homes. And I didn't see anything regarding charging stations for future electric cars or even potential electric cars now. Did I miss that or are those not part of this?
No, the, the, these homes are built to HUD standards and HUD guidelines at this time do not wreck, do not have solar as part of their package. That is something that could be added later at a later time, but it won't be part of the initial package. And I do believe that the garages do come with charging stations.
Thank you. And then I had another question. You talked about the insulation in the walls as R21?
Yes, that is correct.
I was under the impression, and maybe I'm incorrect, but I was under the impression that the new standards for insulation was at a minimum of R32.
R32 minimum is in the ceilings. In the walls, R21 is actually, it's typically R19 in a stick-built home, but R21 is what they're building in the HUD factories. And there is, there is some variances between HUD guidelines and city, you know, your city and county guidelines as well.
This is Noah House. I will just chime in, the city has adopted a Cal Green Tier One standard, so we do require a little bit higher energy standard. It includes insulation, energy efficiency, all those things for development in Katari that is in the standard building code.
Perfect, thank you.
So can you elaborate that on that, Noah? I mean, in this particular situation, would it be a greater level of R21 or does R21 fit into that category?
Yeah, so how the calculations work for insulation of a home, you can, it kind of looks at the whole home envelope. So if you were to increase the insulation in the ceiling, then you could in theory reduce the insulation in the walls. And so it's not, it doesn't prescribe that the walls must be this, the floor must be this, and the ceiling must be this. It's the overall insulation factor for the home must meet X standard. And then the individual designers can figure out how to best fit that in. But the two-by-cid wall construction will allow significantly more insulation in those walls than is typical of obviously two-by-four framing.
Okay, so even if the factor is not at the 32, the, the volume of the R21, you're inferring that it would compensate for some of that?
That's right. If they didn't have a certain specification in the walls, they would have to make up for it in the floor and the ceiling in order to compensate for meeting the overall insulation requirements.
Okay. Well, I, I think the overall project so far looks really good. And I'm glad that we have standards that are a little bit higher. Having been involved in HUD housing over the years, with all due respect to housing and urban development, some of those particular projects were not as well crafted as they could be. So I would just like us to make sure that we are looking at these that are going to be a little bit more durable down the road. And that's it on those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any more hands from council for questions, so I will then ask to open that to public comment. So Laura, I may as well turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And for our listeners, those of you who are participating and would like to comment, please use the raise hand icon on your desktop or device or down star nine if you're calling from just your telephone. With that, Lori Alderman, go ahead.
Hi, I wanted to say I generally approve of this project development. I'm just very concerned about the parking. I am very aware of Ryan Lane. I've taken care of a disabled young woman there for 30 years. It is a very narrow area and it is so close to Santerio Way and where Jamie Lane will be, will be, there's a crosswalk over to Santerio Way where we already have a problem with parking. You're going to be putting in the bridge housing there too. Like, it just seems that this needs to be considered as a bigger, there needs to be consideration about parking for the general area, maybe something added in. It's, I can tell you Saturday nights, they're overflowing down on Ryan Lane, they're overflowing with cars from Santerio Way. And people get up on the curb with their cars that are there because they can't go in there on lots. So it just, I know it's not a lot of extra cars for these five, but it is something that needs to be considered that, and also the, the street width being so. And I know that the homeowners only allow two car, two, they have stickers and they only allow for two cars per household, but still, that's, it's already very... they only allow for, um, two cars per household, but still, that's, um, it's already very, um, it's, oh, parking's already a problem on Ryan Lane. So anyways, that's my public comment.
Mr. Bridge, go ahead.
Thank you. I have to agree with, uh, Councilmember Moore in, once again, asking about, uh, the solar, um, photovoltaic, uh, complement to this project. Um, I haven't heard from anybody else on the council, but he is spot-on on this. Uh, this needs to be addressed. The, um, also the issue that the garages have, uh, electrical charging stations, uh, if it's not in the writing, you're not gonna get it. And I don't know how many times we have to learn this lesson, if it's not in the writing, you're not gonna get it. But the photovoltaic is an excellent, um, question, and I also thought Cattati had a new, uh, requirement that all new residential building would have a photovoltaic, uh, you know, solar, um, element to the project. So I want to hear some discussion on this. How can you let this project go forward without that, uh, in, in the year two thousand twenty? Thank you.
Here, go ahead. No more hands or ears.
Okay, so thank you for the public comment. And with that, I'll bring it back to council, um, see if there are any comments or questions. And, um... I'm not seeing any council, oh, there we go. Councilmember D'Alasa, go ahead.
Sorry, it took me a while to find that icon. Um, so, uh, Noah, I would like to kind of, um, just put the question out there, and, uh, regarding solar panels, I'm guessing this has something to do with maybe a HUD standard, that it's just not a requirement, um, but it, but it is a very important question. Um, I also just wanna add that, um, in reading through the staff report, it seems like this project from, I, I know there were earlier proposals, but this most recent proposal, which came in September of two thousand nineteen, uh, we're basically talking, coming to the council in an eight-month timeframe, and, um, it, that seems pretty quick, so, um, is that due to some of the changes we've been making in planning and community development? So a couple of questions there for you, Noah.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember D'Alasa. Uh, so, yeah, I, I would say the, regarding to your second question, um, you know, staff, this is, the housing element of the city directs staff to prioritize affordable housing project review. Uh, uh, and then also, you know, the applicant team on this project was very professional, very prepared, and was very responsive. So, it was kind of a, a joint effort on staff prioritizing this project and the review of it, and then also the applicant being very responsive and very motivated to move the project forward. Uh, you know, Dev, and also her whole team at La Franchi and Associates are, are, uh, constant professionals, and, you know, really kind of walk the talk, so to speak, with regards to trying to get some affordable housing built in, in this county. Um, so that's kind of, you're seeing a combination of, of, uh, of effort and professionalism getting a project to you at a relatively, uh, quick timeframe. And then, in the, the Cattati municipal code, the zoning code doesn't mandate solar panels, uh, or photovoltaic systems. The Tier One Cal Green standards that the council prioritized and directed staff to implement above and beyond the standard building code, uh, does mandate that all projects, uh, be pre-plumbed for the installation of electric vehicle charging and solar. Uh, and then, because of the general plan policies that, uh, exist in the city of Cattati, staff, as the, well as the council, and, and I would actually give the council the credit, uh, always push projects to prioritize, uh, some photovoltaics in their development, both commercial and residential projects. Um, all that being said, um, for five single-family homes that are going to meet the Cal Green Tier One standards, staff did not push installation of photovoltaics, given that, in the big picture, we're trying to provide some ownership opportunities for folks, um, uh, of a, of a deep restricted or, or restricted lower income level. So that, that was kind of some of the decision-making, uh, that went into the discussion around those issues.
No, and I appreciate that, and, um, I, I mean, I, I do understand that, um, inevitably raises the cost of the project more so from a purchase standpoint, from the potential homeowners. Um, but, but it is, it is worth asking, because I think we do try to push hard for that, so... All right, um, thank you for that. That's all I have for now, Mayor.
Okay, I see Councilmember Harvey has your hand up as well, so go ahead. Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, yes, so I understand that the requirements aren't there to have the solar, but is it possible in the scheme of things for these units to be at least plumbed for it, because there are other programs out there that people can participate in if they're at a minimum plumbed for that?
Yes, the homes, the homes will be plumbed for solar, per the Cal Green standard. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then Vice Mayor Moore, could you hit it? Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I was gonna go ahead and defer to Councilmember Landman, and then come back if I may.
Okay, great, go ahead. Councilmember Landman.
I can do that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just wanna confirm, so I understand that, uh, we are going to be wiring for solar in these buildings, in the garages. Are we actually wiring for solar or putting in chargers? I assume we're just wiring for solar, that's one question. The next, probably more important question I wanted to ask, we were to condition, uh, E V panels, E V panels on the top of the units, what would be the impact, uh, for buyers? What would that do to affordability? Would this change be significant? Uh, I would think, given the scope, it probably wouldn't, but I'd like to hear a response on that, if, if anybody's able to give me one. Thank you.
So this is Noah House, uh, I'll respond, so both the, the homes will be wired for E V charging and solar panels. Um, from the staff perspective, if, if they chose to locate the solar panel array kind of wiring for the garage, that would meet the direction and intent of that code. From the staff perspective, I'd have to check with the building official to make sure it's, uh, would absolutely meet the building standard. But typically, because the, um, the electrical systems are interrelated between the home and the garage, if they chose to put the panels on the garage to serve the home, then that meets the requirement, and it could provide adequate, um, solar electricity for the home, even if it's located on a separate structure. And then again, each garage will be wired for, uh, E V charging per the Cal Green standards. A, a staff, I do not have solid, um, estimates on what it would take for a thirteen to fifteen hundred square foot home, uh, the cost of the solar array.
I wonder if anybody from the development team could just prepare, or able to speak to that tonight?
Uh, this is Sean Montoya, I, can I speak to that?
Please.
Okay. So the, the California Energy Commission changed the, uh, regulations in two thousand nineteen to require solar, and I think that's what a lot of people are referring to. They've estimated the average house solar system would increase the price by ninety-five hundred dollars, so that's from the state of California. I don't know how you would, uh, you know, Sonoma County's probably as expensive, if not more expensive than the average in California, but that's what the, uh, C E C has listed.
And sorry, this is Noah House, and Sean, thank you for bringing that up. I completely forgot about that, that element of the code change. And so, uh, council, you may recall when we brought the two thousand nineteen building code before you, and you did elevate, uh, to Cal Green, uh, Tier One, we also discussed the fact that all new residential development for single-family homes would be solar power. And so, Mr. Montoya, could you speak to that? Because these permits will be pulled under the two thousand nineteen building code.
Yeah, and, uh, honestly, I'm a little unclear, and maybe this is more to Mark, about the difference between HUD regulations, the California Energy Commission, and what, uh, the city of Cattati, but that's, you know, new for two thousand nineteen. Also, just briefly speaking to the, uh, electric vehicle chargers, that has been a requirement for many years to prep for those. We don't normally install them, because every car manufacturer's a little bit different, so...
And that makes sense, though, too.
Yeah, so we, we then definitely have to have a separate circuit board, because a lot of them take, uh, extra power. And then each individual can choose, uh, sometimes when you buy the vehicle, it comes with a charger that's specific to that vehicle.
Well, I'm just looking at that nine point five K, uh, excuse me, nine, nine and a half K we're talking about, uh, per unit. Considering the price of units, doesn't strike me, and of course, I'm not the developer, but doesn't strike me as a, as a huge change, uh, unless I could be convinced otherwise that this was problematic or a deal killer for this, admittedly, good-looking project, I would be much more comfortable agreeing with my colleague, Vice Mayor Moore, in conditioning solar panels on this.
Well, if I could just chime in one more time, uh, I think, I had a conversation with Dev about this, 'cause I'm somewhat new to these type of projects. She, and she, and I'd like her to maybe weigh in. He's, it's the, the cost to the new homeowner, the five thousand dollar change will eliminate a large percentage of people from one income group to the next. So, we've been really trying to keep the cost down as low as we can, but, uh, I'd like to defer to Dev to explain that, exactly what that means, ninety-five hundred dollars, uh, per unit, if you don't mind.
Sure, um, the first thing I'll say that, is sitting in very many meetings and talking about what something is going to cost, I'm sorry, this is Dev, Dev just, um, is, rarely translates into what my pro forma looks like at the time that it has to happen. So, um, you know, it's nine, nine-five hundred is what I hear today, um, I think we would have to really figure that out. Having said that, though, we do have, uh, homeowners who have absolutely added solar to their homes, and, uh, we've worked with other nonprofits, like Great Alternatives, for example, and we have had homeowners, um, add solar at zero cost, depending on their income level and what type of grant availability, uh, Great Alternatives, for example, has had. So sometimes it's for families that, you know, uh, at very low income, low or median, it just depends. So, um, I think as, um, solar becomes more ubiquitous, it is also, uh, more accessible, and, um, you know, and something that our homeowners can certainly add. The longer our homeowners are in their homes, because their housing costs are fixed, the more they can afford to do upgrades such as solar. So that's what my experience has been in the seventeen years I've been doing this as the founding director, is that our homeowners do make the improvements and do add that. So if we can be prepared and have, um, you know, the, uh, homes built in such a way that it makes it, um, you know, easy enough to add solar, I think we can do that. Otherwise, um, I would have to be more convinced that it, that it would stop at the ninety-five hundred, and yes, someone could absolutely be priced out. I don't know if you remember going back to maybe looking for your first home, and the difference, it's, that's, it, it's a, that's a stretch, and that's not a small number, ten thousand.
Well, I, I do recognize that, the difference, but actually, that brings up the point. I, I do remember looking at our first home, and also our second home. And I also knew that once we got into those homes, we were stretched thin for years, and the ability to add things such as solar, or o, other worthwhile improvements, took a long time to get to a position to be able to do. And, and that's the point I find as a council member, it seems clear to me from watching these processes for some years, if we don't get solar in at the start, and I understand the development resistance to that, but if we don't require it, it frankly just doesn't get done, and the benefits aren't there to the degree we could easily do right now. It, it makes sense to do it now, and I recognize that may, in a few cases, make the difference in some cost for some people, but at the same time, I'm struggling with this, 'cause it strikes me as a worthwhile benefit. I, I'll, I'll defer to where my colleagues wish to go with that, but I'd be much more comfortable seeing this come back either with a, a plan for including that cost and including it, or a plan that includes a grant process that allows people to do it at zero cost, uh, something that essentially means we'll have this without waiting for people who move into new homes, uh, to be able to find the funds to do, 'cause I, I guarantee they're probably not gonna be able to do it for a long time. That, that, that was at least the experience I've generally found in life.
And this is, this is Mark again, and I, I appreciate all of this, because it is something that's very important to a lot of people and a lot of communities. Unfortunately, as, as I was speaking earlier, this is not a HUD requirement, and so it's never even built or offered in the factories at this time. Uh, it would have to be something that would go on the garages, as they are stick-built. And then the next, you know, the next weight, of course, is, you know, if you increase the, you know, what that would do is if you added ninety-five, let's just round it off to ten thousand dollars, and I just, I just ran some quick calculations. Most people are gonna come in with three to three and a half percent down. You know, Fannie Mae does have a three percent down program that I know Dev is working on. And so that's gonna take the, you know, your, your mortgage up about sixty dollars a month. And I don't know Cattati's electric cost, but on a thirteen or, we have, you know, eleven to fifteen hundred square foot homes, I don't know if fifty dollars would be the same on your electric bill or in your house payment. I just know that the more that we add into it, the, the more it becomes less affordable, and that's really been, you know, that's been the big push from, from the very beginning. And so if, if somebody can speak to the typical electric costs, then do they, do they exceed sixty dollars a month for electric only? That would be something to look at before, you know, you go marching into adding it. If it's already pre-wired and pre-plumbed, uh, then there might be some grants available to help do that. Just wanna make sure that the homeowners aren't ridden with trying to qualify for another fifty or sixty dollars a month.
Yeah, granted, and, and my last comment, 'cause I had more than enough time to speak on this issue. My experience with electrical costs, from watching what's going on at the C P U C through Sonoma Clean Power, they continue to go up. Uh, this year, people will probably be noticing if we didn't have so many other things occupying our attention, they've gone up alarmingly, and this will be going for the next few years. So, we need to be talking something that's roughly a push here.
Uh, this is Dev, may I have a, a chance to say, to respond?
Yes, sure, go ahead, no more, yeah.
Um, thank you. So, one of the highest and largest costs that we're struggling with is that we've got impact fees, food fees, um, permits, and so on, and the total for all of those fees, um, just the impact fees are about, it's over fifty-five thousand. So, we're looking at about sixty thousand, uh, dollars, um, that, that we need to, to add to, to the cost of, of the homes, and, um, and so, I, you know, maybe we can, we can have a conversation, and maybe we can come to some agreement where there is, um, some relief on the parts of the fees, where that, those funds have already been sort of allocated, and, you know, we, we, you know, we're, we're looking at that as what the homeowners will have to carry, um, and, and perhaps we can have some of that be assigned to solar, and we put those on for the homeowners as they come on. That part of the, of the funding that would go, um, toward the sixty thousand or so fees would be, um, redirected, um, that's, as a percentage. Would that be something that you would be interested in exploring with us?
Uh, through the mirror, I thought it was Dunn County, I think that just referred to me. I would be more interested, rather than having, whether the community picks up the cost and a higher cost of purchasing a home, or higher cost of doing businesses at City Hall, because fees vanish there, and either way, in the end, it's the same thing. I would be interested in seeing this come back myself with this planned, uh, or an explanation of how dramatic and problematic the change in, uh, market rate is, and, and how, how large a segment it cuts off from affordability, 'cause when I'm looking at ten K here for a project this size, it doesn't seem... how dramatic and problematic the change in, uh, market rate is and, and how, how large a segment it cuts off from affordability. Because when I'm looking at ten K here for a project of this size, it doesn't seem like a lot per house.
Mayor, if I, um, this is Damian. If I may just chime in for a second, um.
Sure. Go ahead.
Perhaps, um, I mean, I believe there's some additional, um, agreements that, that would need to follow any action tonight, the actual, you know, housing approval tonight. And, uh, let me know, you can let me know if I'm off on that. But I believe there's some additional agreements that we have to enter into to, um, to sort of tie it all up with a bow. And we can, um, we can have that as a follow-on action item to, uh, work with, uh, Dev and the Housing Land Trust team to discuss the solar issue and try to come to some arrangement on that. And then, um, and then just bring that package of stuff, uh, package of agreements back at a future meeting.
Hey, Damian, that is correct. Additional agreements will have to come back for, to council for approval. And I just want to add, it's my understanding all new homes in California are required to install solar panels. So this, this may be a, um, you know, kind of a moot discussion. It's just unfortunate. I don't have access, my building official to confirm that. Uh, but if the council chooses to act tonight, they could condition that, um, issue be brought back for them for action if that is not the case. Um, and, and I am almost certain that is, but my hesitancy is the fact that there's the federal government, the state government, and our local regulations all interplaying here. And I just, I do not have the, uh, the certainty to, to, to tell you unequivocally that they will be required for the building code. But I am pretty sure that it will be a requirement, given that it's a new home in California under the 2019 code.
Okay. And I, I think too, I was just going to clarify that the two actions asked for tonight is finding the project exempt from CEQA and then also, um, approving the requested tentative map and design review. Um, so if, when, if a motion is considered tonight, then we could always, like Noah was suggesting, condition it on bringing it back since it's going to come back anyway before us on other issues. So I see Vice Mayor Moore, you have your hand up. So go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would be very much in support of this particular tentative map approval with the conditioning of the solar panels on the homes. Um, nowadays, if you look at, um, $60, that's probably significantly lower than PG&E. And then if we fall back on the requirement of, uh, 2019 that Noah referenced, uh, I think this would be a tremendous project and an asset to the community. So thank you.
Okay. And I'm not seeing any more hands up for council. So I don't know if anybody's ready for our motion at this point.
Madam, uh, Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Lamond. I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution, move a resolution finding the project exempt from requirements of CEQA under Class 32 Cataclysmal Exception consistent with Section 15332 of the California Environment and Quality Act, and approving the requested vesting tentative map and design review of Jamie Lane, a five-lot residential subdivision project located on address parcel number 144-301-012 in the neighborhood medium density zoning district filed number PA, number 19/20, with the condition that if this is not state required to have EP EV panels, they is to come back for the council discussion.
I'll second that. Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Moore.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. I see, uh, Councilmember Harvey, if your hand up. Did you have a question before we go forward with the motion?
I was going to second the motion. I raised my hand to do that, but it's okay. Got it. It's all right.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. I'll ask, um, uh, our city clerk to, to take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Delato.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamond.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Okay. So it's a five oh in favor. So thank you so much, everybody, for your time this evening. And I look forward to hearing back on the issues that were raised. Um, without move on to our regular agenda items, uh, we've got item 11A. And for that, I'm turning over to Craig Scott, I believe.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer, Suzanne Smith, the Executive Director of SCTA, the Sonoma County Transportation Authority is here tonight to present the proposed GO-Sonoma Act, which is a sales tax ordinance and expenditure plan for the November 2020 ballot. The, uh, GO-Sonoma Act addresses the void in transportation projects funding provided by Measure A, a quarter cent sales tax, which is set to expire in 2025. I think with that, I'll, um, have Suzanne take it from here.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mayor and members of the council, can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, great. And, uh, I just want to make sure I control over this. Okay. Um, thank you for the opportunity to present information on the Sonoma County Transportation Authority's proposal to place a transportation sales tax measure extension before voters in November 2020. I'd like to start by acknowledging, uh, that there are far more pressing societal issues facing all of us as we sit here tonight than what I am about to present on. However, part of a civil society and our work in local government is providing a continuum of services that support our human, built and natural environments, helping them survive and thrive. Uh, we are in an extraordinary time, but we will move forward and with stability and importance of a well-planned and reliable transportation system, I'll always need to be a part of what we do. So with that, um, I will, uh, this evening walk through a brief history of our current measure, explain the GO-Sonoma proposal and its benefits to the city of Cattati, and then talk about the process to advance the measure and why we should do so now. Today, we are seeking support from the city council to proceed with this effort. The SCTA is the countywide agency that manages a quarter cent sales tax known as Measure M, dedicated to funding critical transportation infrastructure projects and transit operations. The measure is set to expire in 2024, but the need for dedicated local transportation funding is ongoing. To start, I'm going to cover a few of our accomplishments, how we've leveraged state and federal funds, and the transparency with which we carry out our work with our partners in each of the cities and the counties. Since 2004, when two-thirds of Sonoma County voters supported Measure M, we've been successfully providing funds directly to each city and the county and delivering regionally significant infrastructure projects. Being a self-help county, meaning we bring our own money to the table, has been a key part of getting infrastructure built. It gives us the ability to get projects ready to go, to compete effectively for outside funds, and to control funds that can only be spent here locally on transportation priority. This leads to local jobs and helps provide a stable source of revenue to keep transportation programs and projects moving. In addition to working with local jurisdictions, we also have a citizens advisory committee that oversees project planning, measure audit, annual reporting, and the development of a multi-year strategic plan. The SCTA team has a proven track record of delivering regional projects like Highway 101 and several interchanges and intersections linking to the state system. Having a reliable revenue source, the SCTA has leveraged the highly competitive state and federal funds at a ratio of five to one, widening the 101 corridor. Other projects have seen similar matching opportunities. We've partnered with local jurisdictions to help build the Cattati intermodal facility, the most famous pathways paralleling the railing line, and paving projects throughout the city of Cattati. None of this would have been possible without a local commitment that gets projects shovel-ready and matches construction progress. The transportation sector is a key component of job creation and economic support. A thriving and healthy economy relies on a multimodal system, but the movement of people and goods, plus building infrastructure projects and running transit creates local jobs that have a ripple effect throughout the county. Since Measure M has a 20-year life and is set to expire in 2024, the SCTA boards started discussions more than two years ago about if and when we should ask voters to support spending the funding. The process started with discussions in 2017, but for a variety of reasons. Uh, it was a non-presidential election year in 2018. There were competing transportation measures on the ballot. Uh, there was uncertainty about whether or not we would receive the funding for 101 states. Uh, for many reasons, the board opted to defer until the general election in 2020. That timing actually aligns really well with our update to the Conference of Transportation Plan, which is the SCTA's guiding policy document that showcases project priorities across all modes. It is developed with all of our partner jurisdictions and through a robust stakeholder engagement. Prior to developing the GO-Sonoma expenditure plan, we received project priorities from each of the jurisdictions and from our bus operators. We also used the pavement management system data to develop information on what our road maintenance fees will be over the next 20 years. After that, we've used some of our existing structures to conduct stakeholder outreach, but we also use community group meetings and polling to assess how people feel about transportation. With that information in hand, we developed the GO-Sonoma expenditure plan via the SCTA Board and extensive discussions with stakeholder groups and individual members of the public. The discussion focused on how best to address all modes effectively and retain support from a supermajority of voters. Now that the expenditure plan is finalized and approved by the SCTA Board, state law requires the majority of the cities representing a majority of the population, plus the board supervisors, to support moving forward, which brings me here this evening. Before moving into the content, into the content of the measure, I wanted to share with you the results of our outreach effort. Six hundred and fifteen people were surveyed through community meetings, focus groups, and online. These residents gave us their top three issues of concern with the transportation system. And as you can see, they are the concern that it takes too much time to get around, that it causes harm to the environment, and that the system needs better maintenance. In addition to this non-statistical feedback from our survey, we conducted a statistically valid poll of 600 people in October 2019. There was a very solid 73% support for a quarter cent sales tax extension. Obviously, we're in a very different times now, but countywide polling conducted in early May on a different matter also tested our ballot question. It came in with 76% support, well over the two-thirds required for success. However, given all of the uncertainty we are facing with our health and the economy, the SCTA Board will conduct another poll in early July before making a final decision as to whether or not to proceed. We took the outreach and polling data and developed our vision and goals and aligned them to prioritize the investment of Sonoma, of GO-Sonoma funding. The SCTA vision is connecting people, places, and goods as we transition our transportation network to zero emissions by 2050. Our guiding principles are to improve safety, equity, and quality of life. And the goals of our transportation should be connected, that our transportation system should be connected and reliable, safe and well-maintained, community-oriented, and place-based, and zero emissions. Following all of this groundwork, the SCTA developed the ballot question and the expenditure plan. The ballot question will read, "Without raising taxes, shall the Sonoma County Transportation Authority implement the GO-Sonoma Act to repair potholes, reduce congestion, make biking and walking safer, expand local bus service, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, improve evacuation routes, and enhance transportation services for students and seniors by continuing for 20 years the current quarter cent sales tax dedicated to transportation, providing approximately $26 million annually?" The expenditure plan is based on four program categories, two of which are formula-driven, the smooth and maintained roads category and increased bus service, and two of which are competitive, move traffic and improve safety category and build bikeways and pathways. I will run through the four program categories and talk a bit about how Cattati will benefit from GO-Sonoma. Smooth and maintained roads is the category that really mirrors the program that we currently have under Measure M that, uh, directly contributes funds to each jurisdiction, uh, for local road maintenance and pothole repair. Under GO-Sonoma, this, uh, funding moves double from what we have now, uh, and provide about $10 million annually to dispose the roads. We use a population, population and road mile funding formula. And as you can see, Cattati roads will benefit significantly with over 115, $125,000 annually in reliable funding. The next category is move traffic and improve safety. This program commits 27% of the measure funds, uh, to infrastructure projects and is a competitive program. The expenditure plan calls out specific criteria for these infrastructure projects, and they, projects will be evaluated by such things as, uh, impact air quality, connectivity, cost effectiveness, local support, safety and public health, and traffic flow. All projects will be further assessed based on how they can reduce greenhouse gas emissions, how quickly they can be built, and the ability to create jobs, and how they address geographic equity. All projects will require environmental review, engineering, and matching funds before construction can begin. Projects will also be required to spend 5% on non-auto elements to support all users of the roadway. Each jurisdiction has provided the SCTA with priority projects that serve as examples of the types of projects that will be funded from the move traffic and improve safety category. The list for Cattati includes several corridor improvement projects like Highway 116 improvements, the La Plaza reunification, and interchange ramp improvements. Funding for the GO-Sonoma Act for local transit improvements will go to expanding and enhancing local bus operations to provide a more reliable service that works for more people. GO-Sonoma more than doubles the local funding commitment to bus service with 23% of the measure guaranteed for transit. GO-Sonoma will fund a community benefit program to provide fare-free rides for groups like students and seniors. This will address an immediate need, plus it can be used to match regional and state programs that will grow the fare-free opportunities. This is a formula-based program that is dedicated, uh, to our county's three bus operators, Sonoma County Transit, Center of the City Bus, and Puddle in the Transit. Sonoma County Transit, which serves Cattati, will get just over 50% of the funds. I can't go backwards, apparently. Um, there you go. Sorry about that. Um, the last program is build bikeways and pathways. This is a competitive program that is focused on better separating bikes from cars and making it easier to bike and walk for people of all ages and abilities. Uh, it includes building new infrastructure for bicycles and pedestrians that will increase overall safety, moving critical gaps in existing routes, and promoting the use of active transportation through community benefits programs like Safe Route to School and Vision Zero. GO-Sonoma triples the commitment of local funds to bike and pedestrian projects with 12% of the sales tax revenue dedicated annually to this program. I mentioned the SCTA has been planning for a November 2020 ballot measure for several years now, and here is why. The biggest reason is that we have a lot of work to do and our current sales tax is nearly spent out with the funds committed to projects. By extending the local tax now, we can get new projects of all types ready to go now. This will not only provide benefits to people traveling in Sonoma County, but it will provide jobs to help with economic recovery. There are also a variety of other good reasons why we're looking at, uh, putting the measure on in 2020. We have a proven track record, and we need to continue that work, uh, that allows people to move efficiently and safely throughout the county. Having continuity of funding matters when it takes years to build projects and plan for transit. We need to keep our self-help county status that enables us to compete for state and federal funds. We don't want to lose that leveraging opportunity. We need to support all modes and have more local funds available to do things like help our bus systems recover from the impacts of the pandemic, grow their service, or explore new opportunities that get people out of their cars, reduce GHD emissions, and curtail vehicle miles travel. Those, these local funds are imperative as we strive to reduce GHD emissions from the transportation sector. In addition, there are not likely to be as many ballot measures in 2020 as we would have anticipated pre-pandemic. Two regional measures related to housing and transportation have been postponed. Several statewide initiatives have been Several statewide initiatives have been shelved. While there are some jurisdictions that are considering citywide general tax measures, there are no other countywide special taxes planned at this time. If we wait, the ballots in 2022 and 2024 are likely to be very crowded. And finally, because we need a two-thirds majority to pass, voter turnout is critical, and 2020 will certainly provide that. So what is next? I will be presenting to all nine of the city councils over the next two weeks. If we get support from the cities and from Cattati today, we will conduct a poll in early July. After assessing the poll results at their meeting on July 13, the S C T A board will make the final determination about going to the ballot, and then the S C T A will ask the board of supervisors to place the measure on the ballot. And with that concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you for the presentation, and I will bring it to council to see if there's any questions first, as I see Councilmember Delasso got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Suzanne, thank you for all that information. I want to be clear that this is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a new tax, correct?
That is correct. We currently have a quarter cent sales tax, and this would extend it 20 years.
Right, okay. My one question is, it's kind of, I got lost in the math somewhere, but you mentioned something under smooth and maintaining roads that the amount of funds available will double. So did some kind of a formula change where, because a lot of projects are being accomplished, that more money would be available for that type of work? I think I missed that.
No, that's a great question. Thank you. So right now, our sales tax measure has 40% of the money dedicated to Highway 101 and 5% dedicated to SMART. Because of Measure M, our current measure, we've been able to fully fund the Highway 101 projects, and so that chunk of money that's committed in Measure M is not needed for that purpose in the new measure. And the same with SMART. The 5% that was dedicated to SMART was to help it transition in the early days from, before it had its own sales tax. Now that it has its own sales tax, that 5% is able to go back into different types of projects. So the GoSonoma measure is much more local project funded, or focused, I should say. So we've more than doubled the amount for local bus service, doubled the amount for local road paving, and tripled the amount for bike and pedestrian projects.
Great. So then basically what happened is that more funds are available for these more specifically localized projects in all the different jurisdictions?
Correct.
That's great. That's great news. Thank you very much. And Mayor, that's it for my questions for now.
Okay, are there any other questions for either the presenter or staff at this point from council? All right, Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. Suzanne, thank you very much for that presentation. I had a question kind of following up to John's question. If this thing were to be placed on the ballot and it passed, and down the road, is there anything there that would preclude the various percentages going to the particular projects?
The way the measure is structured is that percentages would have to stay in place unless changed by voters. So for the 20-year life of the measure, the funding split between the four program categories I mentioned would stay in place. The formula for the paving program, for example, we update that every year because it's based on population and road miles. And then the competitive nature of the other, of two of the programs would really, that's the opportunity, I guess, where projects could come in of different sizes and compete, and, you know, a jurisdiction could do, you know, get a big project one year, a small project another year. But the percentages to each of the program categories would remain the same.
Okay. So in light of the unsuccessful SMART tax, we wouldn't see any of this necessarily being ever to SMART on the road?
No. It specifically calls out that the transit funding is dedicated to the bus operators.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so if there are any further questions from council, I'll also note that there were several emails that we received in support as well. So with that, I will open it up to public comment and ask her city clerk for her assistance.
Thank you, Mayor Stillman. The caller with the last four digits of 6632, please go ahead.
Yes, this is Steve Burlbow, and I have worked for some time to get better transit, better bike safety, and so forth. And to complete the SMART trail, I noticed that one of the projects that is in this is that, it's been used in the sample of projects, is to put money into completing the SMART pathway. SMART, of course, has run out of money to that sort of thing, and so that's one advantage. I really hope that we can get the environmental community behind this. That is going to depend on being able to show that it's going to reduce vehicle miles traveled, which I think ought to mean that we build the pathways and complete streets projects first, and put most of the road widening projects down the road when we have lots of people driving electric cars. I hope you will vote to put this on the ballot so that that's an option when we get the results of the polling. Thank you.
Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, hello, Neil Hancock. Yes, I'd like to support this project. We need to be able to provide the leverage with the tax dollars. And as Steve Elber said beforehand on the phone, that being able to provide more safety on roads, hopefully on some of the projects, particularly Highway 116, I've identified and made visible, I hope, time and again. So yes, I would support this and support the council putting it on the budget, thinking on the next tax, or the next voting. So thank you very much, yes.
Eric Switzer, go ahead.
Hi, councilmembers, thank you. I'm the Executive Director of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, and I also serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee of S C T A. So I have spent countless hours in meetings, working with a broad swath of community groups to come up with a spending plan that meets the divergent needs of environmentalist groups and other community organizations, and I'm very happy with the rebuilding product and very much support it. You know, across our state, overall traffic fatalities have been going down, but bicycle and pedestrian fatalities have been going up dramatically with two bike fatalities here in Sonoma County, just in the last few weeks, and then another collision just last night, earlier in our park. So compared to the previous Measure M, this measure triples funding for specific bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, which will improve safety and encourage more folks to ride. Hopefully, all the people who started riding during shelter-in-place will keep riding. But also, the segment that deals with improving roads also requires bike lanes, pedestrian crossings, and other things in there. So there is a lot to help get people out of their cars and on their bikes. I know that there are some of the environmental groups that actually are not fully on board with this, but they think it doesn't go far enough. Some of our concern was that if we changed that balance to much less for roads and much more for other things, that it would not pass scrutiny of the voters, that enough people would want to see enough money for fixing the potholes, as have do I and as does the Bicycle Coalition. There's no news that we have some of the worst roads in the Bay Area, and whether you are on a bike, in a car, an electric car, or on a bus, you are on that road. There's a lawsuit against the county right now by a cyclist with a brain injury after hitting a pothole that was unt fixed despite having been reported. So we all want those roads fixed. But again, as many people have said, the most important thing is we need to keep our status as a self-help county to leverage state and federal funding. If we lost this funding first, it would so impair our ability to compete for funding for all kinds of transportation projects. And bicycle funding is, there's so many more people replying for it than the dollars are out there. So I urge you to vote yes to put this on the November ballot so that we can improve our bike and pedestrian infrastructure and fix our roads. Thanks.
Gloria Ann Barber, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, good. I also want to speak out in support of the council voting yes to put this on to the ballot. Repeating a few things other people have said, I am a multimodal transportation person. I drive, so I do appreciate smooth roads, but I also bike and maybe appreciate them even more when I'm on my bicycle. I'm very concerned about bicycle safety, so I appreciate the additional funds that could come from this to provide more safety for bicyclists and pedestrians. I'm also very supportive of the fact that it prioritizes greenhouse gas reductions. Quite interested to see what happens, so many people staying at home and getting on bikes, but I've noticed, although I'm mostly staying home, I've noticed more cars and people getting back in their cars and, you know, with concerns about public transit and its safety. I think it's really important to keep focused, you know, to try to work towards having people not be in cars and making public transit safe, making roads safe for pedestrians and bicyclists. I'd also like to, I don't think it's, would be part of this measure, I don't know, but some kind of funding to help people buy electric bikes, because people can more easily replace their car with an electric bike in, well, anywhere but in this county. So just a thought about that. And so in general, just supportive of putting this, agreeing to put this measure on to the ballot in 2020. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Back to you. Okay, thank you very much for the public comments, and I will bring it back, we'll close public comments, I'll bring it back to council, and I see Councilmember Lambon, you've got your hand up, so why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor Stillman. Yeah, I want to take a few minutes just to recap this. As the outgoing Chair of S C T R C P A, we've been involved, working on this for some years now, Frank. And I'd like to thank Executive Director Smith for being here tonight in her ongoing road show, presenting this and covering everything very well. But I would like to take a few minutes just to hit a few key points again, because they're important. So forgive me if I do repeat anything you might have heard. First of all, I think the most important thing to point out is this is not an increase in new costs, it is a simple continuation of the current Measure M funding program. And the successful completion of Measure M's Highway 101 expansion project that we've all watched for years now allows us to go in some kind of exciting new directions. It allows us to reinvest that funding that went into the freeway forever. Now we can actually almost double our funding for local roads. We can do a little more than doubling our funding for local bus service, and that translates to increased bus frequencies and hours, some fare fee programs for seniors and students, and that allows us to triple dollars for local bikeways and pedestrian routes, and again, without increasing what we're currently paying. And I think it should be mentioned that we have worked extensively for months with every stakeholder under the sun, from our friends in the environmental community to our friends in the business community, and everybody in between. And that's been a good process, because we've arrived at what I believe is a very good and very equitable distribution of benefits for everybody in all our communities. And it's allowed us to arrive at what I believe is the biggest environmental increase for transportation projects we've ever seen in this county. Now, to be fair, I will point out, as your representative, the only concern I could see for our council is the small potential cost if this was not to pass at the ballot. Because if it doesn't pass at the ballot, the cities would, as mentioned in the staff report, could be stuck for their portion of the cost. And this would look like around 10K roughly for Cattati. Not something I'd want to throw away, that's for sure. But on the other hand, I'd ask you to balance that against the 60K we've received annually for years now from GoSonoma's predecessor, Measure M, and measure that also, more importantly, against the estimated $125,000 and change we'd received annually from GoSonoma. Because, as we mentioned, as Councilmember Delasso was able to discern, GoSonoma has increased the allocations to local communities. And it's been mentioned before, but without GoSonoma, we wouldn't be a self-help county. Self-help means, for anybody who hasn't heard about it, is that we have the dollars, some dollars to put in and put up for projects. That is what brings in the federal and state grant dollars. And without that, without being able to be self-help, the likelihood of getting our share of tax dollars, even though we've paid taxes for it, drops alarmingly. So I think that's important. And the last thing I'd share with my colleagues and the public tonight is we're not being asked tonight from the council, for council or individual endorsement, if you're willing to, I'm certainly supportive of this, but the question tonight is only to authorize S C T A to put this on the ballot and allow the public to have that opportunity to make that decision. Thank you, Mayor Stillman.
Okay, thank you. And I see Councilmember Harvey also has your hand up, so go ahead, Councilmember Harvey. Thank you.
Yes, I think, thank you for that input, Mark. I appreciate that. And I think the only other thing that was, it kind of got skipped over in the presentation, but it was there. I think some of the aspects to our interchanges, I think, are important, because at this point, you know, with having just the one southbound interchange and really only two northbound interchanges, it does make it very difficult. So it was very important to see that all of those arterials, if you were, and getting on and off, that those were being addressed, because I think that as the communities around us grow, those interchanges become more and more important. So I was glad to see those on there, even though they're not directly within our purview, they're at least there to be looked at, to be included in this. And so if there are not any other comments, I'd be happy to make a motion, Mayor.
I do not see any other hands up, so feel free.
Okay, with that, I would like to adopt a motion approving the GoSonoma Act Expenditure Plan of the Sonoma County Transportation Authority as required by the Public Utilities Code Section 180206B to place the measure on the November 2025.
And this is Councilmember Lambon. I'd be happy to second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask our city clerk to take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Delasso.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Lambon.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
With crossed fingers, yes.
Mayor Stillman. Yes. Okay, so that's a 5-0 vote in favor. Thank you for that. And we will move on to Item 11B, award of the construction contract for William and Olive Street Sewer Replacement Project. And I will turn it over. Oh, I'm missing my notes. Who's taking over at this point?
Mayor, members of the council, this is Craig Scott, helping handling this item tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Scott. Go ahead.
Okay. So as you had mentioned, this is for the award of the William Street, Olive Street Sewer Replacement Project. The city has a water master plant, or wastewater master plant, and a water master plant, and the wastewater master plant looks at the capacity of the existing sewer pipes, compares it to project- compares it to projected flows, and compiles a list of priority sewer projects to, you know, meet the existing demands and then increasing demands over time with new development. So last summer, staff brought forward and the council approved a five-year capital improvement program which included projects for paving. And subsequent to that, or as a part of that, staff looked at the projects in the wastewater master plan for those projects that, you know, coincide with the paving projects. And so there were two priority projects that did coincide with the paving of the outer loop, so which is to occur in fiscal year 2021, beginning in July 1st. And so these two priority projects are the upsizing the existing 10-inch sewer to a 12-inch sewer in William Street, and then upsizing the existing 8-inch sewer in Olaf Street to a 12-inch. And certainly we don't want to come along and pave it and then come back a year later and treads it all up to installed sewer. So we're, back in December, just this past December, city council approved a professional service agreement to design these priority sewer projects with the intent to have them put out to bid and constructed early summer ahead of the paving project. So that has been completed, and on June 2nd, we opened up, we received five bids, opened them, and the apparent low bidder was Team Gilati Incorporated with a low bid of 527,141, which was a remarkable 25% under the engineer's estimate, that's 175,000 dollars below the engineer's estimate, which is, you know, a very positive outcome for these bids. Very, turns out to be a very positive bidding environment right now, which is great for us. One thing to note is that with the five-year capital project and recognizing that these two priority projects need to be constructed, this was subsequent to the adoption of the city's 1920 annual budget. So this project is not in the 1920 budget. So, but as it turns out, we did do a financial plan of utilities of the water and sewer in the fall. And at that time, we were aware of the need to construct these projects, and so we, this project was incorporated into that financial plan, and it was found that the utilities could absorb this cost of these projects. So the funding is to come from a $400,000 transferred over from the sewer capital fund 405. There's unappropriated fund balance in there. That fund is provided by connection fees. There is a component of these two replacement pipelines that serve future development, so that is entirely appropriate. And then there's 362,141 remainder coming out of the sewer operating fund, and that's from unappropriated fund balances from that sewer enterprise fund. So the total project cost is comprised of the construction contract. There's additional costs needed to deliver a project, and that includes the design and construction management, which was the professional service agreement approved back in December with R L G and Race for 135,000. Roughly half of that is spent to date, having completed the design and then a 15% contingency, which turns out to be $100,000 for the total project cost there, when all of these factors are taken into account, is 762,141. So at this point, we are, staff is recommending awarding the sewer contract for the project. There's a resolution to award the construction contract and then authorize the city manager to execute this, set the construction contract and any change orders needed up to the authorized budget amount. I think the resolution also certainly authorizes staff to make those adjustments to the budget, those transfers, as mentioned, from the sewer capital fund and the sewer operating fund in those amounts. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council. Are there any questions for staff on the project? Okay, seeing none. Realize we're flirting with close to 10 o'clock, but let's open it up for public comment. So I'll have city clerk, if you could check and see if there are anybody who would like to comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Stillman, I show no hands raised.
Okay, great, well then, we'll bring it back to council, see if maybe we can, hey, Councilmember Delloso.
Yeah, if, I didn't see any other hands up from council, I mean, if there are no comments, I would make a motion, but I guess I can check to see if there's any comments at this point.
I'm not seeing any more hands going up, and I'm appreciating the background noise that you have, that sounds like crickets.
In fact, there are crickets, yes, out in the backyard there. With that then, I move to adopt a resolution, renewing the construction contract for the William Street and Olaf Street Sewer Replacement Project to Team Gilati Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute said contract and any needed change orders and amendments to the construction management agreement up to the approved project budget amount.
And this is Susan, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask the city clerk to take a roll call vote. Councilmember Delloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Stillman. Yes. Thank you, so please show that as a five oh vote in favor of the award of the contract. And thank you for the presentation, Craig Scott. And before we move on to city manager report, I will ask the council if there's a motion to go past 10:00 PM, since we're looking at about 10 minutes from now.
Yeah, Mayor, this is Councilmember Delloso, I make a motion that we move to continue this meeting past 10:00 PM this evening.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, if we could do another roll call vote on that issue, please, Moore. Councilmember Delloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore. Mayor Stillman. Yes. Okay, great, so we will continue on and move to the city manager's report. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, it's Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
I thought, I thought that went awfully quick. As noted, thank you.
That's where you threw me off, Moore.
Okay, well now we'll show it as a five oh vote, apologies. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to city manager report, so I'll turn it over to the city manager if you need a bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I thought I'd have to rush this in 10 minutes, but it sounds like I have plenty of time now. So I'll start off with just online bill payments. I wanted to let everyone know that, I mean, you're aware that we do online payments already for a variety of things, but we've recently added payments by phone also. So we do alarm permits, dog licenses, as well as donations to the Kenoine Fund, revenue fund, support, training and care of Remo, our niece Kenoine. So coming up here in the near future, our business licenses that can be paid online as well as building permits will be available online in the near future. And the phone system, of course, for payments, in addition to the web-based payments, which we already have been operational for a while now. We had it for utility, for water and sewer utilities for many years, but we recently added these other non-utility payment methods online. And then the phone service is just now simply, it's been turned on and it's, you can access it by dialing 833-282-0825, and it's an automated process that walks you through the steps if you don't have a computer or don't want to use a computer to pay your bills. And just a reminder, so water and sewer bills are due tonight, but as we all know, due to the current pandemic, we're not currently disconnecting our water services for non-payment, at least during the proclaimed local emergency. And if any customer needs assistance in making a payment, the administrative services department will assist in formalizing payment plans or extension for the city's discontinuation policy. So if you're, if anyone's interested in that, they can call administrative services at 665-3631. On the police side of things, our traffic officer, Officer Ranky, is finishing up motor school and will graduate this Friday. It's an 80-hour course sponsored by Alameda County Sheriff's Department, so you probably haven't seen the motorcycle around for a bit, it will be deployed here in the very near future, so look for that. For construction, the Falletti Ranch buildings are coming along quickly, we expect construction to be complete July 20th. The roof is on the water tower and the siding is, was going on today, started the day before a little bit. The water tower will have an ADA accessible restroom, first floor and opposite to the second floor, and it's oriented to third. There will be a utility closet on the first floor and also an outdoor sink, so when community groups or children are in there, interacting with animals or whatever the activity might be, they have outdoor sinks to wash their hair. Come and go clean. A new deck was installed in the main house as well as indoor improvements, including removal of interior wall, new electrical, insulation, new windows, and water heater. Outdoor improvements that will be coming soon include a widened driveway entrance off of West Sierra and reconfiguring some of the internal fencing to make more usable spaces for animals. Garden area. On the, on the wayfinding project, this is moving along on schedule, so signs are being fabricated with delivery slated for June 25th. And the dollars, this is for the Creek Trail to be on site right after the Fourth of July weekend. Installations of all these signs are expected on July 6th along the Creek Trail, and work's expected to be substantially complete by July 21st. And so this phase of the project, in case anyone isn't familiar, is essentially all of the signage except for the larger structural signs that you may recall in the parks and downtown, and that's part of Phase Two, which is, as we talked about in the budget workshops, proposed for next fiscal year. The PG&E permit for work in front of La Plaza Park has been issued. Work's expected to begin there the first week of July and extend into late August. Will be seen some traffic interruptions when they're in the roadway for part of that project on Olandwood Highway. And then the city's water quality report has been completed and is being sent to all customers this month. As you know, the city extensively tests its water, and all tests meet all the federal and state water quality requirements, and the water system is safe and reliable and is unaffected by the pandemic, you know, there's discussion about that. It has, the pandemic has no impact on safety or quality. On community development, the economic development ordinance the council passed is now gone into effect, so it's officially in effect now. And all, with regard to the latest health order, just in the prior health order, we could do outdoor construction activities, we could issue permits for those sorts of things, but indoor construction in buildings that were occupied, like homes that are occupied or businesses that are occupied, were still being held, but the latest health order allows our building department to issue all those permits. And we continue to do that while city hall is closed to walk in traffic, so we've just provided other mechanisms to keep business working that is available under the health order. So also, just look at our, look for our website under the headlines for a new guide, just a one-pager guide for businesses to reopen, so all the information, all the different sources of information related to business reopening and all. There's that one page, looking for something on the top, go, and kind of walk their way through a reopening. And the applications for the expanded use of sidewalks and right-of-way that the council approves is on the website as well, and so it's also available for people to apply if that's, but that's an opportunity they want to avail themselves of potential help with the business startups. And then finally, last couple of things, last Wednesday was the first farmer's market of the summer. It was a perfect day for fresh produce, handcrafted goods, and pre-made dinner options. The market will continue to operate each Wednesday from 4:30 to 7:30 in La Plaza Park through the end of August. Yesterday, we started our nine-week camp Katati, which is a weekly summer camp program. It's, our first week was sold out, actually, our second week was sold out as well. We have 12 campers, which is the maximum allowed under the health order. And we spend each day playing games, making crafts, learning and having fun while following the health orders and recommendations. And we do have space available for, not this week or next week, but future weeks throughout the summer, if parents need that. And next week, we are starting up our North Bay Theatrics Theater Camp. So for theater camp, children spend the week working on, we'll be spending the week working on a Disney mashup performance, you can look at the city's Facebook page, see that there? At the end of the week, the camp will perform in the Katati room in a virtual, through a virtual crowd via Zoom. The following week, we'll be hosting an improv camp, and the week, June 29th, will be Hamilton Junior Camp. And then we're also in the final stages of planning our gymnastics camp and junior farmster camps, taking place later in the summer, so you can sign up for all these camps on our city website. And then also starting last week, Redwood Empire Food Bank Summer Lunch Program is at the Ray Miller Community Center behind City Hall. So each weekday throughout the summer, anyone age 18 or under can come and pick up and grab a lunch to go from the hours of noon to 12:30. There's no paperwork or ours to be required, and it's a drive-through, kind of low-touch method of doing it. Last year, we used to do it in La Plaza Park. This year, we've altered it, obviously, for the, make it safe for people to pick up their lunches. And then if you have any questions about any of this or any events, please contact Ashley at 665-4222 or a willsneakatati.org, and also, of course, our city website, Facebook, Instagram. Information about all direct programs with all these other programs as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Look at that, you still did it before 10 o'clock. All right, see, Councilmember Harvey, you have your hand up, go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Hey, Damian, I probably missed it in, there's so much stuff on the COVID thing, but any outlook, because I've had a couple of people ask me about gyms, when those might open?
Yeah, so like fitness centers, gyms, dance studios, all those are kind of lumped together generally, and the state, just this last week issued guidance on those types of businesses. So what that means then is that it's up to the counties individually to decide when they think that the health data warrants moving, you know, opening those businesses. And that's, that's all I've heard so far, is that the current order, which currently does not allow indoor, does indoor type recreation activities. The last I heard was that the health officer is going to keep the current order in place and then revisit it potentially on June, it goes 22nd. So it looks like we'll have the current order for at least another week and a half or so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not seeing any further questions, so thank you for the report, and we'll move on to item 13, city council member reports. Since you were skipped before, why don't you go first, Councilmember Harvey? you go first, Councilmember Harvey?
Well, geez, lo and behold, this week I don't have anything. Actually, I have a meeting tomorrow, and I have three on Thursday. So you can catch me next time.
Okay, sounds good. And then Councilmember Deloso?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a couple. We had our Sonoma County Ag and Open Space meeting. We had not had one since late February. Part of the reason is four of the Ag and Open Space FTE staff are dedicated entirely to disaster work as county employees. It's not the same for individuals, of course. It rotates, however, of a staff of about 26. Four of those people are permanently missing until there's some kind of a semblance of normalcy, and so we're waiting on that. A couple of points that were brought up by the manager is that the transfer of a property called the Carrington Property, which is out on the coast at Highway One and Coleman Valley Road. It's about 300-plus acres. That'll be a future regional park with public access. So that's going to the board for approval. And the staff was actually up at Ag and Open Space was very prepared for the shelter in place. They had anticipated it for about two weeks before the order came out. So when the order came out for, you know, no more office work, literally within that one workday, the 26 FTE were already hooked up and ready to work from home. So this was our first virtual meeting, and where we normally can sometimes barely have a quorum, and our quorum, I think, is eight or nine people, we had all but maybe three advisory committee members attend the meeting. So it was really, it was quite good and went well, but that's all I had to report out on that. And that was a week ago, Thursday. And then last, on June 5, we had a Health Action Network Council Agenda. And that was a different format. Of course, we did it on Zoom as well. But in that particular meeting, we normally have breakout groups, and the council representatives that are there from the different jurisdictions, and there's usually three or four or five of us, you know, will typically go into a breakout session to discuss the topic for that meeting. In this particular case, we, Dr. Mace was on the phone and went over some COVID-19 disparities, especially with the Latinx community. And, you know, there's some startling numbers there where, you know, they make up 27% of the population, but there's 70% of the cases. And of course, a lot of that is because most of them are considered essential workers, and they would then potentially get COVID at home, and then they, I'm sorry, at work, and then bring it home and spread it to the family members there. So it's kind of a vicious circle. But also, we had a couple of people talk to us about behavioral health. There's a potential ballot measure, speaking of ballot measures, that may be going on. I believe that's for this November's ballot. And the last item I have is kind of indirectly related, but I did receive an email request from the food services coordinator at Katati Water Park Unified School District, a woman named Suzy King. And that was, and I worked with the city manager to post a message on the city's website, speaking of food programs. So they've been doing food handout programs since the 23rd of March. And a statistic she also shared with me was, from that day, from the 23rd of March through May, and this is only on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, staff at three different sites in the Unified School District handed out 63,000 meals. So a vehicle would pull up, again, no questions asked, same concept, don't care if they go to school in this district, they don't care if they went to school anywhere. They would just ask, how many meals do you need? They'd be handed a bag, and it would be lunch for that day and breakfast for the next day. So it was pretty impressive and very similar concept to what Damian was talking about, that the city will be doing again this summer. So, and this program with the school district is going to be continuing, I believe I heard, until the end of August at this point in time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll check Councilmember Landman. Have you got anything to report out this week?
Yes, I just wanted to say, in solidarity with Councilmember Harvey, I have nothing to report this week.
Okay, then I'll turn to Vice Mayor Moore. He's got anything to report this week.
Thank you. We have an upcoming meeting next week for REMIF, with a lot of the pending changes that might be coming down the road. And as you can imagine, with all of the exposures and the insurance issues from workers' comp to liability, REMIF has been extremely busy lately. So we'll have a more updated report after our next meeting on the 23rd, I believe, or 18th. And that's it.
Okay, well, again, in solidarity, I do not have anything specific to report out. Unfortunately, all the library advisory board meetings have been postponed for the moment. So other than increased, my weekly meetings with the mayors and check-ins on the COVID updates, it is just chugging along as it has been for the last 10 weeks. So thank you guys so much. With that, we'll move on to item 14, public comment on non-action agenda items. And with that, I'll turn to our city clerk to see if there's anybody interested in commenting on that.
Thank you, Mayor Stoman. Ms. Alderman, go ahead.
Hi, I wanted to, sorry. The, for one thing, you're, Damian, I think he was saying that the city runs, the, is, no, it wasn't, sorry, I'm having trouble speaking this evening. The lunch program is not run by the city, that you just made it sound like it was. It is run by Red, I mean, the Redwood Empire Food Bank. And it does, you don't need to be taking credit for things that aren't your programs. The other thing is, this is a future agenda item I'd like, the, with Camp Katati, it's been limited to 12 kids. That leaves 99% of the kids in Katati with nothing to do. Nothing for the teens. Most things have been canceled because of COVID. What I'd like to see is some ideas and some projects, such as maybe having activity kits to give out, things like that. We don't know how long, we don't know if we'll have a second wave, and you're leaving 99% of the kids, there's 12 kids that are going to have a great summer, and 99%, and they're being highly subsidized by the city. And then there's 99% of the city's kids who aren't going to have anything to do and are still stuck inside. Or anyways, I would like to have that as an agenda item that there's, to address the unmet needs of the vir children and also the seniors. There's nothing for seniors to do. A lot of, like, my mom has been at home for three months now, hasn't been out, and she's still in isolation. We need to have a lot of things for seniors to do too, especially if this pandemic keeps continuing. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Rich, go ahead.
Counsel, one of the things that you should put on a future agenda is our lying police chief. Okay, Katati was not on the forefront to pioneer body cameras in the county. That's horse crap. Okay, our police chief does not even wear a body camera himself. You've never seen him with a body camera on. I've brought this before the city council many times now, that he is a sole police officer during our city council meetings, and he does not have a body camera on to record the evidence in the event there's any violence or disruption in the room. He's a liar, okay? Also, the fact is that the, there's an article in The American Thinker published today by Sally Zalinksky called "The Dark Knight Rises." Let me tell you something, you gotta read this about Black Lives Matters. It says, "For Black Lives Matters, Antifa, and most peaceful protests, the antidote to racism is to, quote, dismantle the mechanism of white supremacy," end quote. "To improve the system, we must destroy the system because it is inherently racist. They foment chaos by destroying property and infrastructure, terrorize the population into compliance, annihilate the criminal justice system, and abolish the police." You gotta read this. I'm gonna go on down below. They follow, they advocate the final solution is to eat the rich, kill those who control the mechanisms of white supremacy. Yes, executions. It's a violent insurrection. It goes on. It goes on. To destroy the system that created them, you have to destroy the criminal behavior, which means crimes are being committed by victims of the racist system, minorities, the mentally ill, the drug addicts, the impoverished, the homeless. You destroy the system that created those people, and you destroy the criminal behavior. Crimes that sneak through the society will be handled by the community police, by a group charged with enforcing a code of conduct of meeting out punishment. This goes on and on. You have to read this. This is what's coming to Katati. Okay, and they're coming for you. If you don't fall into line with them, yes, our city and downtown area is going to be in danger. Our artifacts and statues will be in danger if you don't fall into line. Get down on your hands and knees to these people. Thank you.
Mayor Stoman, I have no other commentary. Okay. So, yes, Vice Mayor Moore, see, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate, Black Lives Matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And on item 15, were there any information that was received after the agenda was posted?
I have one additional email received this morning that will be posted.
Okay, terrific. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 10:15 PM. Thank you very much for all of the public input, especially earlier. It was quite a turnout. So thank you very much for everybody's time today.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good night. Stay safe, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.